Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council. Mayor Skip Henderson. City manager Isaiah Hughley. Pops Barnes, District 1. Glenn Davis, District 2. Bruce Huff, District 3. Valerie Thompson, District 4. Charmaine Crabbe, District 5. Gary Allen, Mayor Pro Tem and District 6. Mimi Woodson, District 7. Walker Garrett, District 8. Judy Thomas, Post 9 at Large Counselor. John House, Post 10 at Large Counselor. Sandra Davis, Clerk of Council. And City Attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council.
Good evening and welcome to the November 5th city council meeting. This is typically just a proclamation meeting, but we, because of the holidays, we have made this a regular business meeting as well. We're going to begin tonight, as we always do for all of our meetings, by asking God's blessing. I want to invite Reverend Reginald Thompson from Revelation Missionary Baptist Church to deliver our invocation. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to the city councils for having me. This is kind of special for me. I get to pray for the first meeting of my wife being on council. So let us pray. Oh, dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. Oh Lord, we ask for your blessings upon the mayor of this city, upon all the council members. Oh, dear heavenly Father, also on our city manager. Please, Lord, continue to lead them and guide them in the way that they need to be led, Lord, to help continue to take this city in the direction that is pleasing to you, dear Lord. Oh, dear heavenly Father, I just ask that you continue to let your spirit move throughout this city, dear heavenly Father. Continue to bless it, dear Lord. And, Lord, help us all, as citizens of this city, to do the things that are pleasing to you, dear heavenly Father. This I do pray in thy son Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Reverend Thompson, thank you so much. And that is probably a first, that we have had a husband deliver the invocation as his wife sat up here. Do want to welcome Valerie Thompson to the city council and, of course, want to welcome Counselor Allen to his new seat as Mayor Pro Tem. We'll now call up the Faith Middle School National Junior Honor Society members. If you come up front, they'll lead us in a pledge. The rest of you, please stand, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If y'all would, give us your name and how old you are and so we can get a chance to see you on television.
I speak up.
Speak up. Let's try that one again.
Say it loud.
There we go.
I'm Kaylee Francis and I'm 12 years old.
I'm Mackenzie Poshard and I'm 14 years old.
I'm Madison Adams and I'm 14 years old.
I'm Michael Ramos and I'm 12 years old.
I'm Fred Denton and I'm 13 years old.
I'm Tyler Sturville and I'm 13 years old.
Well, thank y'all. You did a magnificent job. If the parents don't mind, would y'all stand up so we could recognize you for raising such good kids? Because tonight is normally a proclamation meeting, we do have a number of proclamations that we want to present this evening. So first, Counselor Thomas with Georgia Retired Educators Day. Counselor Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Ingersoll, who is the president of the Muskogee Association, Retired Educators Association, if you and your group would come to the podium. It's with a great deal of pleasure and honor that I read this proclamation into our record. I believe that Ms. Booker told me this is the 19th year that we've been doing this, something like 19 years that we've been doing this. So it's a great honor to read this into the record. Whereas the governor of the state of Georgia has proclaimed the day of Sunday, November 3rd, 2019, as Retired Educators Day in Georgia. And whereas there are more than 130,000 retired educators in Georgia, 30,000 plus of whom are members of the Georgia Retired Educators Association. And whereas the retired educators of Georgia donate thousands of hours of volunteer service and make invaluable contributions to the welfare of their respective communities across the state. And whereas it is appropriate that a day be designated for citizens to express their appreciation for the contributions that retired educators have made and continue to make for the betterment of human lives and for society. And whereas local churches will recognize those lasting contributions made by retired educators in this community. And whereas the city of Columbus recognizes and urges all citizens to observe and honor all retired educators. Now therefore, BH Skip Henderson III, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, does hereby proclaim Sunday, November 3rd, 2019, as Georgia Retired Educators Day. Congratulations. Mr. Mayor, we usually ask at some point during this presentation if the folks who are here will tell us where they taught and how many years they served our community. But Ms. Ingersoll may have something before that.
Certainly. Counselor Thomas, thank you so much for the reading of the proclamation to our mayor, Skip Henderson, and our Mayor Pro Tem, Gary Allen, council members, city manager Isaiah Hughley, and our city attorney Fay. Thank you so much for the opportunity. Thank you for presenting this proclamation for all retired educators. We are so deeply gratified for your acknowledgement. Our mission is to support fellowship and give service. And our educators are still doing that every day. We will always support education, educators, both active and retired, as well as our community and society. So we thank you again for this recognition. I taught in Muskogee County School District, or in the city of Columbus, for 40 years. I was a teacher, an elementary principal, and a human resources coordinator at the district office. Thank you.
How long did you teach? 40 years. You said that. I'm sorry. I'm not listening. I should have listened. Veterans math, too.
I served in education for 40 years.
Okay.
I've enjoyed coming and listening and learning. Of course, I was the first guidance director for Muskogee County School District, and I worked 46 years in Muskogee County. I own a book and I do a lot of volunteering and giving service.
Hi. My name is Maddie Wright. I taught 38 years. I'm looking for one of my students, Bruce Huff. He's gone. I don't know where he is. And Clifton Fay. And my good friend Evelyn. Evelyn is retired, but Evelyn always told how she disliked me because I made her dissect a frog. So she's not here to tell you. I enjoyed my years teaching at Carver High School, and when they integrated the schools in the Muskogee County School District, I went to Hardaway, and I stayed there for 25 years. I thank the council for everything that they do. I want to support the ideas that they have about growing the city. I want to encourage you to continue to look at the growth of the city. Look at the growth of your schools. I think a town, a city, can be no stronger than its educational system. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Rhonda Hollis. I taught at Columbus State University in the Baccalaureate Nursing Program for 22 years. One of my students is one of your council persons, Pops Barnes.
Hello. Thank you so much for this honor. My name is Karen Harton, and I have taught for 32 years in this county, my last 18 years being at Carver High School.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Rochelle Jones, and I taught at Fox Elementary School. That's where I started my career, teaching 4th grade. I taught there for 17 years, and then I became principal of that school. And I was principal there for about five years, and then I was moved kicking and screaming because I thought Fox was where I belonged for the rest of my life, loved those children. But they moved me to Blanchard Elementary, where I loved Blanchard after I got there. And I got to know Mayor Skip Henderson and his wife. They were one of the set of wonderful parents that were at Blanchard Elementary School. And that's why I retired. In total, I had about 39 years of service in Muskogee County School District, loved every minute of it, but I knew when it was time to let somebody else slide in that seat.
Thank you, Ms. Jones.
Good afternoon. I'm Edith Carter. I taught 30 years in Muskogee County, retired, went in elementary in 2001, and I enjoyed every minute of it.
Good evening. My name is Vicki Hardaway. I completed 36 years in education in 2014, when I retired. I was classroom teacher as well as a high school administrator, and thoroughly enjoyed every minute of it. My last assignment was at George Washington Carver High School, and I know quite a few of you on the council. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much for having us today. Marietta Webb. I have a little over 30 years in public education with, just right at 27, for Muskogee County School District. I was at Shaw High School for the majority of that time, teaching for 18 years, and CTA supervisor for five, and then I was principal at Academic Success Center. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you once again, Councilwoman Thomas, for reading the proclamation. I'm Donna Kemp, and I had over 45 years in Muskogee County. And I was at several schools, but that wasn't because I was in trouble. It was because I kept moving and closing schools. I taught at Bellwood for a number of years. I taught at Waddell, Assistant Principal at Blanchard, and Principal at Bibb, closed that one, and Bellwood both, and then went to Wesley Heights my last 12 years. I want to thank you for your support. I too could not have done my job without the support of city council and wonderful parents like Skip Henderson and his wife. I can't claim any of you as students, but if I could, I would.
Thank you, Ms. Kim.
I'm Rudy Ingersoll. I taught at Carver, Baker, and Richards, 32 years. And I think I'm the city manager's first boss. Don't forget it.
Mr. Mayor and council, let me just comment on that. He is absolutely right, and I work for Columbus Youth Opportunity and Middle School. And you all are familiar with Cedar Hills Rec. Center, where the hills or the topography is like so with a swing blade. I mean, I cut grass up and down that hill, and he was the boss. He did it to me.
Well, it certainly didn't do you any harm.
He did not. But I appreciate that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your recognition. My name is Carol Harrison. I taught in Muskogee County for 29 years. I started out at Fort Benning, actually, at White Elementary, and then moved to Muskogee County. I taught at Baker Middle School, at the Teenage Parenting Center, and at Jordan High School.
Thank you.
And if I may add, full disclosure, that is my husband Rudy Ingersoll, and I'm his And if I may amend mine, I'm sorry I didn't follow the full directions. Number one, we always follow directions, and I appreciate the mayor asking, where did I teach? I taught when I came out of college at Carver High School. I graduated from Carver and came back to teach Carver. And I also taught at a school that's no longer here, Listening High School for the Death at one point. And then I became elementary principal. Well, I taught in other schools in the district, from preschool to high school. And then I became principal at 30th Avenue Elementary School, and then River Road Elementary School. And then I went to the central office. I had a wonderful 40 years in the system, and we all continue to support education. And so we thank you for the opportunity to continue to serve and support our community, and we again thank you for this recognition and honor.
Well, in a room full of teachers, I hesitate to show off my poor math skills, but I was trying to keep up, and this represents just under 420 years of service to the children and the families of Muskogee County School District. God bless all of you. Come on in. I may be 60 years old, but I still do whatever my teachers tell me to do. All right, and next, we have a proclamation celebrating National Nurse Practitioner Week. And Counselor Valerie Thompson will read that.
Thank you, Mayor Henderson.
Do we have anybody here for National Nurse Practitioner Week? Y'all come on up to the podium, please. I need, I may need to talk to one of y'all if this cold doesn't get any better.
Let me just say, I am honored to read this proclamation, being my first time in council and my first proclamation to be read. So I'm honored to do this for you. Whereas nurse practitioners, MPs serve as trusted frontline healthcare providers for patients in our state. And whereas, in addition to diagnosing and treating acute and chronic conditions, MPs focus on health promotion, disease prevention, health education, and counseling, guiding patients to make smarter health and lifestyle choices. And whereas the confidence that patients have in MP delivered healthcare is evidenced by the more than 1 billion annual patient visits made to MPs across the country. And whereas MPs are highly skilled practitioners with advanced education and clinical training, building upon their initial registered nurse preparation, there are more than 270,000 licensed MPs in the United States and 4,815 in the state of Georgia, providing primary, acute, and specialty care to patients of all ages and walks of life. And whereas more than five decades of research demonstrates the high quality of care provided by MPs, better utilization of MPs through modernized state laws and improved system policies create better health through a more accessible, efficient, cost-effective, and higher-quality healthcare system. And whereas MPs are in 22 states, including the District of Columbia, Guam, and Northern Morania Islands, these areas have implemented full practice authority for MPs, granting patients full and direct access to the outstanding care offered by these healthcare providers. And whereas leading governmental and policy entities, including the National Academy of Medicine, National Council of State Board of Nursing, National Governors Association, and Federal Trade Commission have taken notice of the benefits of MP full practice authority and have endorsed such a regulatory mode. And whereas the city of Columbus recognizes the countless contributions MPs have made over the past half-century and will continue to make to the health and well-being of citizens in our state. Now therefore, our mayor, Skip Henderson III, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, do hereby proclaim the week of November 10 through the 16, 2019, as National Nurse Practitioner Week. And witness thereof, I herein to set his hands and call the official seal of Columbus, Georgia. Congratulations.
You don't want to say anything? Got to be a spokesperson among you.
On behalf of Columbus State University and our Nurse Practitioner Program, we appreciate your support from the mayor and the council. And on behalf of my colleagues, thank you.
Once you introduce yourselves, let us know who you are.
I'm Dr. Amy Vale. I'm over the Nurse Practitioner Program at Columbus State, and I've been a nurse practitioner for 19 years, and I work in pediatrics.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Sarah Gravel, and I'm an assistant professor of nursing within Columbus State's Family Nurse Practitioner Program. And I've been a nurse practitioner for six years, primarily in emergency medicine and public health.
Hello. I'm Dr. Marguerite Lawrence. I'm a retired Army nurse practitioner. I continue to serve the Army through the VA, and I've been a nurse practitioner in Baghdad as well as Walter Reed.
Wow. Thank you for your service.
My name is Chandler Paget. Actually graduated from Columbus State's Family Nurse Practitioner Program this past May, and I'm now teaching there on the junior level at Columbus State. And I'm also working around Columbus at a hospice that's local, Preferred Care Hospice, as well as Piedmont Northside. Thank you.
My name is Dr. Gwendolyn Miller. I work at Columbus State University. I'm assistant professor there, as well as I've been a nurse practitioner for 13 years now, and I primarily practice in pediatrics, but I have done emergency medicine as well.
Terrific. Y'all would, come around, let us shake hands and thank you for your service to the community. Next, Counselor Thomas says a proclamation for Columbus State University's Military Appreciation Day. Mr. Bean, Cameron, anyone else associated with this organization, welcome to join him at the podium.
Well, that was about four of them with the nurse.
I see that. I see that.
Cameron, come on up to the podium. This proclamation is for Columbus State University's Military Appreciation. Mr. Bean works with the department at Columbus State that works with our military, both active duty, retired, dependents, spouses, to make sure that Columbus State is providing what these folks need in the way of college public education. So it's with a great deal of honor, Cameron, that I read this tonight. Whereas the Military Appreciation Day Tribute at Columbus State University coincides with the na- the National Observation of Veterans Day on November 11th, which gives deserved recognition to all who have answered the nation's call to duty as a member of the United States Armed Forces. And whereas, Columbus State University is pleased and honored to join together with our community partners to recognize our students that are active-duty and veterans, along with faculty and staff members who have served this country with distinction, both in peacetime and in war. And whereas, we have a continuing sense of gratitude to those who have sacrificed so much in the defense of the freedom which we all continue to enjoy. And whereas, the freedoms we enjoy as Americans have been purchased and maintained at a high cost. And whereas, the service and sacrifice of all veterans and active-duty will be honored during Columbus State University's Annual Military Appreciation Day on Tuesday, November 12th, 2019, following the observance of Veterans Day. Now, therefore, BH Skip Henderson III, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, does hereby proclaim Tuesday, November 12th, 2019, as Columbus State University Military Appreciation Day. Thank you, Cameron.
Thank you. I know it probably is a little frightening to see me here representing the military, but, no, I want to, I want to expand a little on what Counselor Thomas was sharing with you. Over the past few years, Columbus State has created a military-affiliated student advisory committee, which is comprised of community members, many of whom are veterans, but all of whom have a heart for service to our veterans, active-duty, and dependents. At Columbus State, that's 1,100 students out of our 8,100. It's a significant percentage of our student body, and this advisory committee was sort of designed to provide supplemental support to what our military enrollment office does. Over the past ten months, we have privately raised over $200,000 for scholarship support, programming support, so that we at CSU can provide the special care that's required and the special financial support required to ensure that a veteran or an active-duty military service member or dependent has the kind of counseling and advising and services and financial support that is unique to their life experience and what they've done for us. So, we value all of our students at Columbus State, but we're taking extra special care to ensure that the experience for our veterans and active-duty and dependents is handled very specifically to them. And I just want to share the wonderful news we received last week. Last year was the first year that Columbus State applied for a ranking or recognition by the Military Times Best for Vets ranking system. And last year, we placed 122nd, and last week, we have increased our ranking to number 50 in the country as a best public university for veterans. So, yeah, it's a great achievement. I'm pleased to share that with all of you. And I especially want to thank our mayor and counselors Garrett and counselors Thomas for being contributors to that scholarship support fund, and Counselor Thomas, who is, serves as a member of that advisory committee. So, this council is very well-represented by her leadership, and we appreciate all your support. And next year, when I come, I'm going to thank all of you for your generous contributions to that fund, because I will, I will give you a call. I don't think I'm legally allowed to ask them for money here, am I?
Probably not tonight, yeah.
I won't do that today. But thank you very much for this time and for all you do for Columbus State and the military here in Columbus.
Mr. Mayor, one of the things that this group is doing also is working with the faculty at CSU to make sure that they understand, particularly for our active-duty students, some of the constraints that they may have because they're on active-duty, and how to deal with some of those kinds of things. So, it's not just the student, but it's also working with the faculty to make sure that next year, when you come, we'll be more than, we'll be higher on the list than 50.
That's right. Maybe number one?
Yeah.
Counselor Barnes?
Just want to say, it's just awesome what Columbus State has done, and as veterans, and I know John and I didn't have those types of seamless transitions into civilian life when we exited our, so we just want to say thank you so much for, and Counselor Woodson, to thank you so very much for all that you do for veterans. And I'd like to take a minute, Mr. Mayor, and say, this coming Saturday now, it's 11th annual Veterans Day Parade. And Columbus State is always a participant. Thank you so much for that. To tell everyone, here in Columbus, Georgia, it's so patriotic, and it just warms our hearts to see so many people come out and just wave and say thank you to the many women and men who wore the uniform of our armed forces to protect the precious freedoms that we have. And if anyone's never lived overseas, to really appreciate what we have, and I always say, freedom that we have here is just not free. It comes at a price. And I'm just so fortunate to be in Columbus, Georgia, where the individuals, the citizens here really do appreciate veterans, and thanks again for all that Columbus State University does.
Thank you for your service.
Cameron, thank you. If you would, come around, let us thank you. Thank you, ma'am. All right, and lastly, Counselor Barnes with tribute for Al Haynes Day. Is Al here? You want to hold on to this, or?
Yes, Mr. Brown.
Okay, we'll, we'll hold on to this till Mr. Haynes can join us. All right, next, we've got a couple of resolutions. Mayor Pro Tim Allen?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of resolutions recognizing two individuals that served on Animal Control Board, and they read as follows. Resolution expressing appreciation for the, I'm sorry, I didn't ask if they were here. Timothy Butts or Becky Carter here?
Mr. Mayor, I'll go ahead and read them into the record.
It'd be great. Resolution expressing appreciation of the council for meritorious service rendered Columbus by Ms. Becky Carter and Mr. Timothy Butts. Whereas, they have, they are of Columbus, Georgia, have served diligently and faithfully as a member of the Animal Control Advisory Board. Now, therefore, the council of Columbus, Georgia hereby resolves, this council hereby expresses its appreciation for the diligent, faithful, and meritorious civil service of Ms. Becky Carter and Mr. Timothy Butts, who have served on the Animal Control Board. I move the adoption.
Motion and a second to approve, all in favor, say aye. Any against? All right, they are approved. Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, it's your agenda.
Want to do the minutes, Mayor?
Yeah, I do those, I forget them every month, every week. You'd think it's been a year, you'd think I'd remember. All right, is motion and second to approve the minutes. Any discussion? Call those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Thank you all.
All right, our regular agenda is pretty short. We need a vote on an ordinance repealing the old ordinance 16-47 on the procurement of items 10,000 to 24,999.
Motion and second to approve. Any discussion? We have lost, I've got. No, we haven't called it yet. I've got the clerk's button pushed. Did you push your button? Okay. All right, well, if there's no discussion, can we cue it for the vote, please? Counselors, please register your votes.
Next item, Mayor, is first reading of an ordinance amending Chapter Three of the Columbus Code Alcoholics Beverage Regulations, create a new category of on-premises license for a food hall. First proposed location down near the river, next to the Whitewater office location. It's up for discussion or any questions? I know finance folks have worked on it. Any questions about that?
Doesn't appear to be any.
All right. We'll vote on that next week then.
Does anybody in the audience have an issue with it?
I think there's some proponents.
About the?
Ma'am, did you want to be heard on that ordinance?
Is it to talk about this ordinance, ma'am? Is it to talk about this? Yes, ma'am. No, that, it's not, it wouldn't be appropriate for those comments right now. This is specifically to this ordinance and this first reading.
All right, we'll bring this back, Mayor, for a vote next week. Next item up is amendment for, at Chapter 14, on the false alarm penalties for police fire, medical alarms, registration requirements. This proposal, the false alarm penalties, would substantially increase after the second offense, but it's up for discussion.
Counselor Thomas?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to have Chief Sluchek and Chief Shores, if they would, to just give us a little rundown, so that the folks who are listening will understand what we're trying to do here.
Good evening. The object of this is to cut down on the number of false alarms we have in Columbus, Georgia. In 2018, the Columbus Police Department responded to over 22,000 false alarms, and I think the Fire Department responded to over 2,500 false alarms. And every time an alarm goes off, and of course, in Columbus, they call you and ask you, in Georgia, they call you and ask you, do you want to send the police? And of course, if you say, if you tell the alarm company yes, they're going to send an officer. So, those are the ones that we are counting as false alarms, where police or fire people were actually dispatched and arrived at the scene. For us, we send two officers every time we have a false alarm, and it's an average of 30 minutes to 45 minutes per call. The officers get there, they have to get out, check the business, and then see if we can get ahold of an owner to come down. And at least one officer has to stay to check the business out when the owner comes down there. So, what we did is we looked at some things around the country, some things that were being done to cut down on false alarms, what other cities were doing, not trying to reinvent the wheel, and we think we've come up with a solution to hopefully cut down on the number of false alarms that we respond to in Columbus, Georgia. 22,000 false alarms is a lot. We run about a 96% false alarm rate.
And Chief Sluchek, would you, would you go through how this is going to work, the pricing and that sort of thing?
Right, we're hoping to get a company to come in, and presently, there's an RFP out that would handle the false alarms for the city, to where the burden wouldn't be with our finance department. This company would come in, you would register your burglar alarm with that company. If you presently have a burglar alarm registered with the city of Columbus, you'd be grandfathered in, and it wouldn't cost you a dime. Everyone who comes in with a new alarm that's not registered would be a one-time $35 alarm fee, registration fee. The next year, you would have to register your alarm again, but there would be no additional fee. And the reason for re-registering the alarm, what I found out dealing with the city, is that we don't really know who owns the alarms. You could have built a house 20 years ago, sold it five times, and the city still has the person who originally built the house as the person who owns the alarm. So, that gives us, allows us to know who owns the alarm and who to contact when the alarm is going off. If you have a false alarm, your first time is free, then don't have a charge for it. The second time, you can, you can either go to what they call Alarm School, which is, what we're going to ask in the RFP is for the company to do an online class for the alarms, or you can pay a $50 civil fee. Most people, I hope, would choose to go to Alarm School. Now, the third time that you have a false alarm, you're, all these assessments are civil assessments. It's $100, the fourth time is $100, the fifth time's $125, sixth time's $150, the seventh is $200, eighth $250, ninth $300, and the tenth and additional times is $400 in a civil fine.
Excuse me, Chief. Counselor Woodson?
No, let him finish. I'll ask him.
So, it, the company will do the billing, the individual who registers their alarm can set up an account online, alarms can be re-registered online, is what we're asking for in the RFP, re-registered online, fines can be paid online. I think you have 30 days from the time you're notified to pay the fine. What we're asking in the RFP is, is that if, if you don't think you had a false alarm, then you get a right to appeal it. And you appeal it, and a hearing officer will be the person who the chief of police chooses to be the hearing officer, and that's probably going to be me. So, and you'll come down and you'll explain, you know, why you had a false alarm.
Chief, the fines that you read out, is that in a certain time period, or is that over?
Oh, yeah, calendar year. Your first time you have a false alarm, a year.
Do you have people that do 10 false alarms in a year?
Well, with 22,000 false alarms, I think we have people that have more than that. You know, I've talked to some of the people that are in the alarm business in Columbus, Georgia, to the alarm companies, and asked them, of course, what impact it would have on them, and really, the way they, their business model, it really wouldn't have any other than now, they fill out the registration fee and send it in form. Now, it will be the person who owns the alarm's responsibility to fill it out and to stay registered. And what, one of the businesses told me was, well, it's about time, because what this will do, it will make people fix their alarm. And I said, well, wait a minute, we don't have people who know their alarm is broken. They said, yeah, they know the battery's low, they know they've got a loose wire, and they don't care to fix it. So, to me, that.
And that causes the alarm to go.
And that causes the alarm to go off, and we send the police. So, if you fix, the idea is not to make revenue, okay? And the city would probably get a portion of this. It wouldn't cost us anything to get into it. But the idea is not to collect revenue, the idea is to cut down on the number of burglar alarms that we have that are false and the fire alarms. I mean, when you have a false fire alarm, you're rolling that big truck, and they probably get, what, about two miles per gallon of diesel? And, you know, and then you got the truck going down the road, it's liability, our citizens right there on the roadway, just, you know, you're responding to an emergency situation in an emergency manner, and you get there and there's nothing there. So, it, you know, we really need to cut down. What's hap, what we're doing now is not doing it. We're staying pretty much consistent, and I think the Fire Department.
We are. Since 2011, our numbers haven't changed. We've been averaging approximately 2,500 false alarms on the fireside alone. So, when you look at the fact that a fire truck averages, you know, 25 to upwards of 40 tons going down the road with your children, your parents, your family, your friends, then obviously, that's an unnecessary risk that we want, we do not want to expose to our citizens. So, if we can reduce the non-compliance in our community, the fire service would certainly appreciate that.
Okay. Counselor Woodson?
Yes, I just want to make sure that we're clear for the audience. This is only for alarms that are like through AT, AT&amp;T, and things like that, it has nothing to do with the alarms that are like Ring or anything like that, does it?
It has to do with every alarm that dispatches a police officer or a fire truck to your house. You know, a lot of people have a Ring doorbell and things like that. We don't get dispatched on that. Now, if you have your own alarm, and it dials, and it goes to the police department, and we dispatch a police car, then you come underneath this ordinance also. If you have a private alarm, you're going to have to register it with us, so we know who we can contact if the alarm's going off. You wouldn't believe the times that we get a burglar alarm calling, it's a, it's an audible alarm, and the neighbors are calling us saying, hey, y'all can cut it off, and sometimes we don't know who the alarm belongs to. We can't get ahold of what we call a code four, a responsible person. So, if you have a burglar alarm, pri- So, if you have a burglar alarm, private or with an alarm company, and that burglar alarm dispatches a police car or a fire or an EMS, then you're subject to this ordinance. Covers everyone equally.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yes, ma'am.
Good. Counselor Davis?
Thank you, mayor. Chief, I just want to thank you for reaching out to some of the businesses here in town and talking with them. I know it's, there's a lot of stuff happening, and we're trying to bring awareness to this. And, and in that light, what I would like to share is that, or if you can expand on a little bit, what we currently do, because we currently, everybody is supposed to register their alarms. I mean, that's the way the current ordinance. So, that's, that still stays the same.
Nothing changes.
And there's a fee for that, too, but it-
Unless you're already registered. If you've already registered with the city-
Right.
There's no fee. You're grandfathered in. You just, if you already have a number and you're already registered, there's no fee. And every time you go to re-register, there's no fee.
Right, but if someone wants to install one today, they would have to register-
Yes, the thirty-five-dollar one-time registration.
But they're doing it through their companies, alarm companies and so forth.
Now they are, yes.
Right, right. And so, really, what you're proposing is adding an administrator in the middle. Alarm companies wouldn't have to, have to do that anymore. But now, it's, it's the citizens' responsibility to make sure they're, they're registered. That's, I guess that leads to my next question. I want to make sure in all this that, could you talk a little bit about how we're going to bring the awareness to the community and the citizens and those who have the alarms? Because some people are probably not going to get this message.
Right.
And if this ordinance passes and it goes into, into play, you know, there's going to be somebody out there that, you know, oh, I'm sorry, I just didn't know. But kind of walk, for the sake of the citizens watching and in the audience, kind of walk us through that, how that's, how that's going to work and how the city plans to reach out to the community to let them know that they need to register. And let me expand on that a little bit more. You talked about the private, or let's just, don't say private, people that go and do their own alarm systems, like Nest or Ring, or they do their own individual, I guess, home protection or property protection. Talk a little bit of how that works, because they won't have access to a company that can help guide them or talk to them and maybe alert them to some of the changes. So, it may be trial and error. So, could you expand a little bit on that?
Well, we, we plan on doing a course of public information through GC, through the TV here. The alarm companies, we're planning on using those to contact their, their clients and let their clients know. We're going to do some public information announcements through the RFP, through the, through the company, hopefully. And if, if you don't get the message, and your alarm goes off, and we go out to your house, and you have not registered your alarm, then there is a fine for not registering your alarm. But if you didn't know, and we go out there for the first time, and we're not going to fine you, we're going to tell you, hey, you need to register your alarm, and we're going to give you the information on how you can go about doing it.
Right.
So, you're right, there will be some people who don't know, and when their alarm goes off for the first time in that year where they get it for free, when we go out, our officers will be notified that that norm, alarm is not registered. And then we will notify that person that, look, you're required to register your alarm, and here are the ways that you can do it.
And that would be done, I'm going to use the term administrator, the vendor, whoever the city is, chooses. I guess that's going through an RFP process, but-
Right, yes, yes.
They'll have a online, a website set up where the citizens would have easy access to it and go right on, fill it out. And then you mentioned also, if you have to go to Alarm School, it's online, so you can do it at home, anytime you want to. I'm assuming it's pretty easy. It just brings awareness to, hey, next time, be a little more careful. But I was surprised, just, you know, I don't think a lot of citizens really, look, the CPD provides, and the Fire Department provides a service. This is service. It's a service to our community. But I don't think people really realize what you just said about the twenty-two thousand plus calls and close to-
Twenty-five hundred.
Twenty-five hundred plus calls with fire EMS.
Wearing terror on the apparatus. We're hitting around ten thousand dollars a year.
Exactly. That's my point, is a lot of moving, there's a lot of moving parts there. And when people really need a police officer, and if that police officer has to go way back in the back of the neighborhood, and then all of a sudden get called from a false alarm to go somewhere else, I mean, it takes time to do that. And I think that, I don't think people really understand that, because a lot of times when you can't get an officer, they may be answering these false alarms. You do the math on it, that's a lot of false alarms in a day, depending on when, where, and the situation that's happening. So, yeah, this is, this is a way to provide a better, efficient, efficient response to, to our citizens, and at the same time, engage them in this process. I think also, the purpose in this is that behind the scenes with the city, there's a lot of moving parts as well through departments, and it's cost a lot of money to even make this happen. CPD, nine-one-one, Finance Department, I mean, there's a lot of things happening, and I believe, from a collection standpoint, it's really difficult to do. I think this, having that central administrator is really going to, really going to help out and take a lot of burden, take a lot of the workload off of the, off the city staff. That's, that's not easy, chasing, chasing these calls around and then, you know, getting it in the system and where it needs to be. You know, you don't have to talk about that, but I'm sure it takes a lot of hours, labor hours, and a lot of money to do that, which, which just seems like a more efficient way to do it. And I really, my, my concern was how it would affect the alarm companies and the services that they provide, but I think it makes it a little more easier for them, and that they can still be a part of it. And we're still doing the same thing. Everything's the same, except now it's in the hands of the citizens to register and make sure they register every year.
Right.
And then you'll have a central service that's, that's providing this service and can do the collections, et cetera.
Right.
You want to add to that?
That's what we're, that's what we're looking for. You hit it on, you know-
Okay.
It would be, make everything more efficient and hopefully, cut these burglar alarms, at least cut them in half.
Well, again, Mr. City Manager, I hope that we can be proactive in making sure that we get the, the message out there. Mr. Mayor, that we can get the message to the citizens and that everybody knows, and they, they won't be surprised by this. But like I said before, you're, you're required already, under the current ordinance, to register. So, you're still going through the same process. It's just going to be channeled a little more internally in the city.
Right. You're required to register right now, and you do get fined for false alarms right now.
Right.
So, the only thing's changed is who you register with. We're going to be more efficient with the registration, and the fines have gone up, and the burden of collecting those fines, we're not going to be on the city Finance Department anymore.
Benip?
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Counselor Thomas?
I have another question for Chief Shores. The, I'm sitting here thinking about what constitutes a false alarm. If you send an ambulance to my house, and we decide, we, the patient and the EMTs decide that I don't need to go to the hospital, that's not a false alarm.
Right. That would not constitute a false alarm under this definition. So, this primarily is talking about the fire alarms. It's a little more difficult to determine whether or not it's a false medical call versus a false fire alarm call, where we can see that your, your house is, is not obviously experiencing a fire event. So, medical call's a little more difficult, but this primarily is dealing with the fire alarm calls.
And Chief Sluchek, you said you send two officers each time you do this, and you also send them sometimes to, when you have fire calls, is that, isn't that correct? Sometimes these officers go to those, too?
We respond with the Fire Department. We block the roads, keep people from running over the hoses, so we have to have police officers there to, to secure the area and allow them to do their job.
While the real heroes get in there and take care of business.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Counselor Thompson?
I just want you all to, just for a few minutes, talk about that there are other cities that already have this in place. And I believe in speaking with you that you talked about one of those cities that they have it in place, and it is working, and that's Atlanta.
Cobb County, places like that. Yeah, Atlanta was, there was a big, big write-up about Atlanta, about how they were able to reduce their fire, their burglar alarms and police alarms by almost fifty percent by implementing something similar to what we're trying to do here in Columbus, Georgia. I think you're familiar with it. You were telling me that you had to register up there, too.
When, when I lived in Atlanta for a few months, it was in place then, and we had to register our alarm systems, and you were fined if they were premature alarms, and it worked.
Now, I understand what we're calling a false alarm is not that if you open your door, and the alarm goes off, and they call your alarm company, and your alarm company calls you and says, do you want to send the police? And you say, no, don't send the police. That's not a false alarm. The only time we count an alarm as false is if we have a police officer dispatched, and if you call us off before we get there, it doesn't count as a false alarm. But if the officers arrive at the scene, check the business or the, or the home, then that counts, and there's no burglary, that counts as a false alarm.
Counselor Grab?
Thank you. If somebody isn't registered, if their equipment isn't registered now, how can, and they do not have a company that they're with, you know, they have Centricom or something like, how do they register with you?
They go online, and they go, each, what we're asking through the RFP, and I think we're going to be able to get it, is, is that each person who has an alarm is allowed to create their own account with the alarm company.
No, I'm talking about right now, like today, if they wanted to go on, if they wanted to register.
If you want to register, go to the Finance Department.
Finance Department?
The, the ordinance currently says to register with the Finance Department of the city of Columbus.
Okay, and you have to physically go into the Finance Department, or can you call the Finance Department?
I have to turn that over to Finance.
Good evening. The application for alarm registration is available on our website, and we do accept faxes, emails, or you can walk into the office here that's located on the first floor and register that way.
Okay.
Thank you.
Counselor Woodson?
Just a curiosity, out of the RFP, would there be like a reminder to, you know, the homeowner that it's time to renew their, their registration?
I don't know. I think, I think that's very possible, seeing as how it's online. I know with the alarm, right now, with, with, with the, most of the alarm companies that operate in Columbus, Georgia, you'll get a, you'll get a letter every year to update your information. So, I think we probably have the same thing done with, with, just send an email to the, you know, hey, it's January the first, time to upgrade, update your information. Because the second, after you register the first time, there's no charge for it. And that, what's important about that is just letting us keep the information of who the owner of the alarm is and who the responsible person is if we need to get in contact with somebody.
Okay. And what happens, would, let's say I have an alarm system, and I change it to a different alarm system. Would I, when I re-register it, would I have to repay again the fee?
No.
Okay.
Because the, the alarm is registered to you. You're home, and you have an alarm. Now, if you sell your house, and someone comes in and takes you over your alarm system, then they would have to re-register.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Counselor Davis?
I want to add to Counselor Thompson's observation where other cities are utilizing this technology. And the difference between what we're trying to accomplish and what's happening now, there are, matter of fact, some of the alarm companies got very, very upset about this. And the reason they got upset was because there are lawsuits going on up in Atlanta dealing with this. But what is happening is the councils in the cities have decided to go through the alarm companies. So, the alarm company's responsible, and they're suing the alarm companies for collection. But that's not what's happening here. Whoever has the alarm, which currently, the way it's set up, the individual has the alarm, they're responsible for this. It's a citizen, not the alarm companies. So, that's one of the differences. I want to make that clear, because somebody's going to go online, you can Google it, go online, and somebody's going to say, wait a minute, you know, this thing that they're fixing to initiate has got lawsuits all over the place. Well, there is a difference.
Right.
There, there's a big difference here. And I think, to the credit of CPD and Columbus Fire and EMS, is that you guys took the time, the departments took the time and did the research to get it right. And you haven't talked about that, but we've had those conversations where you put a lot of effort in doing, digging and doing detailed work to make sure that, that it gets done right.
Thank you. Doesn't appear to be any more questions.
We will bring that back then, next week for a vote.
Thank you, Chiefs.
Thank you. Thank y'all.
That concludes our business agenda, mayor. We would ask for an executive session on property acquisition. That's all we have.
All right. We'll move to the public agenda. And a reminder that on the public agenda, everybody will have five minutes to address council. And at the end of five minutes, we'll have to end the discussion. And if there's something you weren't able to finish during that time, you can come back the end of the clerk's agenda for an additional three minutes. So, first up, I think we've got our Superior Court Clerk, Ms. Danielle Forte. I know we all know you, but if you would, state your name and your address, please.
I had a PowerPoint, if, let me see. Oh, okay. And I think the previous and the next is kind of all I need to know? Okay. And yes, I am Danielle Forte, Clerk of Superior and State Courts, and I'm here to bring awareness to an event that I am having, a hosting, I should say, on November twenty-first at ten to two PM at the Columbus Consolidated Government, which is at one hundred and ten Street on the eleventh floor. And it's a criminal history summit for those with criminal record problems. We are educating the public, oh, thank you, educating the public on record restrictions, formerly known as expungements. And we're doing this in partnership with the Superior and State Court Judges. They have provided us with the courtroom in order to have the event. Also, the Police Department, they have graciously waived for those who are registering for the event. They have waived the twenty-dollar fee that they normally charge for criminal records for anybody participating in the event. We're also partnering with the District Attorney's Office and the Solicitor General's Office that will also be participating in the event. And I do want to make it very clear that this is a free community event, and there is limited space available, and that those who are interested, that have a criminal history record, can register at www.muskogicourts.com/forte, F-O-R-T-E, FAIR, F-A-I-R. And the reason how this came about is there are over two million Georgians with a criminal history record. And those with criminal history records encounter roadblocks when it comes to a successful career, a home, or getting a college degree. And actually, it came about as a result of a conversation that I had with one of the attorneys that are volunteering in the event and providing pro bono free consultations, Jennifer Dunlap of Second Chance Criminal Record Relief. She and I had a conversation, and she brought this to, that, the problem, she made me aware of it. And at that time, we, we formulated a plan for the event, and it kind of took off, and it's been taking off ever since. So, I'm very pleased with her for bringing this to my attention. And I said I would be very happy to host the event. This is, if you register, this is the registration application that you will see if you go online. And once you fill this out, our office, the State and Superior Court Clerk's Office, sends you a confirmation. From that point, the information goes to Jennifer Dunlap at a Second Chance Criminal Record Relief, and she does the legwork with getting and obtaining the registrant's criminal history record. So, that's how the Police Department knows that you are registering, you are a registrant for this event, is when she goes out and obtains that record. A file is made, and so that when you attend the event on Thursday, November twenty-first, you have a one-on-one consultation with attorneys that are volunteering, and you are getting a consultation on your particular record. And so, one of the things that we're kind of stressing to the public, those that we're communicating with, is that this is not a free-for-all. We want to ensure some level of privacy for those that are registering for the event so that they can have a productive- registering for the event so that they can have a productive consultation. So this is a working form. This is a form where an individual, our goal is for that individual to leave the form with individual information about their particular criminal history record and what steps they may need to take in order to get their record restricted. If we see something on site that can be rectified on site, we're doing it on site on that day. So this is, this is the goal of the event. And our last slide is basically the flyer that we are submitting and distributing to the community to bring awareness. The attorneys providing free legal services and consultations, again, is Jennifer Dunlap and Raymond Lakes of a Second Chance Criminal Record Relief. The law offices of Michelle De La Santos, Michelle De La Santos will be present. Mark Post of Mark Post Law LLC, and Mike Morell of Pope Glamory PC will also be available. And present with me today is Jennifer Dunlap. And also, we have some evolving, I'm almost finished, evolving.
You've got about six seconds.
Okay. Partners we have with me today is of the Georgia Childhood, Child Support, I should say, I'm sorry, Georgia Child Support Outreach Fatherhood Program. We have Representative Ed Harbison Jr., who's also present. So as the event progresses, we get more and more community partners that are very excited about the event.
It's an outstanding event. Your office is to be commended. We thank you so much for bringing that to the community and publicizing it here. Counselor Huff.
Thank you for being here. My question is, I get to see Attorney Dunlap in person. I've seen advertising all over town. You do a great job. I've heard your name a lot of places. And I've dealt with your comrade next to you, Ed Harbison Jr. He invited me to a couple of events and my eyes have been opened just by attending and finding out what's really going on. So I hope I'll be able to attend. You know, if I'm not busy, I'll be there. But there are a lot of people that come in and talk to me about how to get their records clean. There are a lot of people that are out here, already out, been out for a while, but they can't get jobs because they can't get the records expunged. So thank you for what you do. I appreciate the presentation.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Woodson?
Yes, thank you very much. I think this is amazing. It's wonderful. You said I would be surprised and I'm surprised. It's awesome. Love it. Just wanted to ask the city manager, is it possible we can put this on CCG so that the public can see it as they watch it, they'll see it, they can pass it among their friends and so forth?
We'll get it on there.
And I'm asking because this is very important. There are a lot of good productive citizens out there. They just, once in their life, they made a mistake that they have to live with it the rest of their lives. And having this opportunity is just a blessing and an amazing.
And I'm being told it's already there.
Awesome. That's what I'm talking about. Good job. Not me, that's the man. Awesome. Great.
Madam Clerk, thank you so much. Yeah, this has been one of the initiatives of the mayor's office too with regards to crime, and that is trying to cut down on recidivism. And a lot of these individuals don't stand a chance if they can't get this off their face. So thank you, ma'am, very much.
Okay, all right.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, next up is Mr. Edward DeBose regarding the consolidation of the Marshals' office. Welcome, Mr. DeBose. Please state your name and your address for us, please, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Congressman John Lewis of Georgia said these words in our quote, "The right to vote is precious, almost sacred. It is the most powerful tool of a nonviolent reform available to every citizen in our democracy." Mr. Mayor and members of council, I'm concerned about what you're doing concerning the Marshals' office. Let me first state this, it's not personal for me. This is not about Marshall Greer countrymen. This is about the right to vote and the right for that vote to count. In 1971, this city was consolidated. Thirteen years after that, this body, maybe not this same group, came before the people with a referendum and said that you wanted to consider abolishing the Marshals' office. The people spoke loud and clear. The people said no in a referendum. That's the people's right. The body belongs to the people. Sixteen years later, in 2000, Mr. Mayor, you was a city council member then, and some of you were council members. You put it before the people again. You asked the people again, will they abolish the Marshals' office? In this vote, 47 out of 48 precincts said no. Forty-seven out of 48 precincts said no. 61% of the people of this city said to you nine council members, might, maybe not the same body, they said, "No, we want the Marshals' office." Not Marshall Greer countrymen, the Marshals' office. And so I challenged somebody even before I finished my conversation, that you go back and revisit this and put it back into the hands of the people. Because what this looks like is that city council has decided that since we cannot trust the people to vote the way we want them to vote, then nine of us and a legislative delegation will tell the people, "This is how we wanted to go." You have asked us to trust you with a one-cent sales tax. That's a referendum. If you can trust the people with a one-cent sales tax, why can't you trust the people with the Marshals' office? If you are going to put the Marshals' office in the hands of nine people and the people have spoken, that's not a democracy. That is not the will of the people. And so I ask every single council member who's represented here today, here's the fact, it's not a cost saving. I look at it as third of pieces of silver because our right to vote cannot be bought. You can't say to the people, "We'll give you an incentive and therefore we'll shut down the office." Here's a fact. If you turn it over to the sheriff, you can't guarantee that the sheriff's going to keep every single employee. You have no power over the sheriff. The sheriff is an elected office. Secondly, how can Sheriff Tompkins, with all due respect, lead the charge to abolish another elected official's office? That's not right. The people who voted in 2000, the people who voted in 1984, they are black and white, they're Republican and Democrat. They are the majority. And so what you say to the people now is, "We hear you, but we know what's best for you." That's not how democracy works. All of you know that. This is not against the city manager. I believe his ideas are perfect. But let the people tell you. If you believe that your product is good, put it before the people. Because what it looks like right now is you're operating under a cover of darkness. That's what it, it may not be that way, but that's what it looked like. You're saying, "Here are these great ideas we have," but you're not, we can't trust you to vote the right way. So we'll just do it ourselves. That's not right. I trust somebody in this city council to do what Dr. King would do in this moment, to go back and look at this again and let us decide. It's not too soon for a 2020 referendum. What's the rush? Let the people decide. In a democracy, that's what happens. I thank you for this opportunity to speak before you, but it means nothing if you continue to go forward under the cover of darkness. Isaiah said, "Come let us reason together." Think about what, if the very argument I'm making is wrong, then challenge me on the argument. Challenge me on the argument that the vote does not belong to the people. If you believe in the people's right to vote for a one-cent sales tax, then believe in the people's right to vote for the Marshals' office. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Huff.
Mr. DeBose, I appreciate you being here today. To the mayor, city manager, and the council, this is only one of the many phone calls that I've received on this issue. So if someone could walk through with him what was explained to me on why we're not having a referendum, I'd appreciate it.
Mr. City Manager.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I, now, I'm not going to attempt to tell you why you're not having a referendum or why it didn't go forward proposing a referendum, but I will share with you how we got to where we are today. So each year, we do a legislative agenda. And we bring forward legislative wish lists from the city council, from city staff. It can come from any city affiliate agency such as the Columbus Convention Visitors' Bureau, the Health Department, the Chamber of Commerce, can come from the Development Authority, and can come from the Public Safety Advisory Commission. In this particular case, a recommendation came forward from the Public Safety Advisory Commission. There was a vote at the Public Safety Advisory Commission based on the information that I received. And that vote was eight to one, proposing or recommending consolidation of the Marshals' office into the sheriff's office based on an announcement from the marshal, an early announcement that said that he would not run for reelection for the Marshals' office. It came forward recommending that we bring it forward on the legislative agenda. Like with any other department, we brought it forward on the legislative agenda based on no incumbent, based on the efficiencies that might occur in that office. The budget, the, the marshal has a budget of $1.3 million. The marshal has 16 sworn officers in the Marshals' office. And the Marshals', the sheriff's office has a budget of $28.9 million, a $28.7, $29 million budget with roughly about 354 sworn officers. When we look at the structures of the organization, I don't know that efficiencies might be realized immediately, but I can tell you, looking at the structure of the organization, causes concern when you've got 16 sworn officers. When you've got a marshal, a chief deputy, you've got two captains, you've got a lieutenant, you've got a sergeant, and you have two corporals, and then you have eight marshal deputies. That's a one-to-one management ratio. And so I think when you look at the totality, the thought or notion is that the efficiency, the savings might not come immediately, but somewhere down the road, you will realize efficiencies when you consider that structure. And so the one thing that we do for employees when you consolidate an office is that we protect the employee. The employees in the Marshals' office are merit system employees. And those employees are protected. And so if there is a consolidation, those sworn officers and non-sworn officers would go to the sheriff's office. Those employees are guaranteed their jobs and guaranteed know that their pay will either remain the same or they will get a, a pay increase. The civilian employees' pay would not change. They would keep their exact pay. The sworn officer's pay is guaranteed. And not only is it guaranteed, they are guaranteed to receive the same pay reform that the sheriff's deputies and sworn officers in the sheriff's office have received over the last year. And so every single sworn officer would get a pay increase. That's every single sworn officer. So the civilian employees are protected and will guarantee their pay. The sworn officers are protected. And not only do you guarantee their pay, they will get a pay increase. And so the Public Safety Advisory Commission's recommendation was brought before this body on the legislative agenda. This council voted on each of those legislative agenda items separately. And, and yes, there were nine counselors present at that meeting and it was a unanimous vote to send it to the delegation. The next step in that process, after the resolution is, is passed at this council, is to go to Hometown Connection. At Hometown Connection, we presented to the legislative delegation to carry with them and introduce legislation when they go back to the legislative session in January. And so that legislative agenda item is now in the hands of the legislative delegation. The legislative delegation, it has gone to them, asking them to create or introduce local legislation on this particular item. Local legislation to avoid any conflicts. And when I say conflicts, there will be no incumbent, you will not displace any incumbent, and people who may have an interest in running for that, that office know well in advance that that has been an item voted on by this council, going to the delegation, that will be introduced in January. And so it would be introduced knowing that there is no incumbent and no one will be displaced. If, in the past, in 1984 and 2000, there were incumbents. There were sitting incumbents in the Marshals' office. And so if it were to go forward with the delegation at this time, knowing that people will qualify and be on the ballot to, for that office, then the presidential primary is March of 2020. It would not be on that ballot. The primary for Columbus Muskogee is May of 2020. And so if it's going to go on the ballot, you would have to put it on the ballot in May of 2020. You would have marshal candidates on the ballot in May of 2020. And if it passes May of 2020, then those candidates who were successful or a candidate who was successful in May of 2020 would have to be told, "You cannot be marshal because we just abandoned the office." Even though you won, the office just got abandoned by a vote if it were to go that way. And, and so then the general election is, if there's, because it's partisan election in May, if there's Republican, Democratic opposition, the person representing his or her party would be on the November ballot. Well, there would be no need to go forward to a November ballot if it was abandoned in May. If it's not abandoned in May, but if it's on the ballot, then they could go forward with the November ballot. But it complicates things. And, and that is how we got to where we are today. And, you know, I heard you invoke the city manager's name. I don't know where you were, what you're coming.
I invoked who?
You said the city manager or whatever you said. But, but I have, you know, first of all, I act as a professional city manager. And the recommendations, proposal that I bring forward to this body, they have nothing to do with politics. They have to do with a professional manager's recommendation based on what's most efficient and most effective for this consolidated government. I have a fiduciary responsibility to do that, and I intend to do that. And so I brought it forward on the agenda based on a recommendation or proposal from the Public Safety Advisory Commission. And when I look at the, the budget in that office, when I look at the structure in that office, as a professional city manager, I can tell you, I can simply say to you what I believe is most efficient for that office or any other office in the government for that matter, is not based on partisan politics, is not based on a person in the office. It, it's based on my 14 and a half years as a professional city manager and seven years as a professional deputy city manager and a total of 35 years in this city government. And I've been around and I have been around long enough and have the background and experience and education and everything else that goes with it, that I think I'm qualified to make a recommendation to you. Now, politically, this council can approve anything they want or they can deny it. I'm going to fulfill my responsibility. I, I committed to do that the day I took this job and I'm going to do it until the day I leave this job. And so that is how we got to where we are and that is where I stand. And so that is how we got to where we are, and that is where I stand.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, can I just begin to share with me?
Mr. DeBose, I'm sorry, sir, I can't, you've had your five minutes. What you can do is you can wait.
The only thing I want to say here is not about his reputation, it's about the people's right to vote. They've heard this argument in 1984.
Mr. DeBose, your five minutes are up. Your five minutes are up, sir. Thank you. Now, you, you may stick around and come back at the end of the clerk's agenda for three additional minutes, but we have to follow our rules. Counselor Thomas.
I wasn't quite finished.
Okay, well, go ahead.
Yeah. The other question that had been put before me was the fact of the referendums being on the same ballot. If we could just touch on that real quick, of having a referendum to consolidate the offices, and a referendum for if it was on there with the said candidates running for office at the same time. The question was put before me, if they both hit at the same time. And the office was voted on to consolidate the office, and you had a candidate on the ballot, would that candidate be able to serve four years and then, since they were all on the ballot at the same time?
I, that's a legal question that I can't answer.
That'll be up to the General Assembly and how they structure any, any amendment to this local act. Either they're going to consolidate the offices with no referendum, or if they decide to put a referendum requirement in there, then I suspect they will allow for at least one term, a delayed effective date. They're going to have to do something to make everything flow consistently, you know, where you don't have an office with no leader. And that's just something that they will structure appropriately with Legislative Council in Atlanta if they want a referendum. If they don't, they'll just go ahead and put it on as a clean bill, a clean amendment to the local legislation.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Thomas.
I, I feel like I need to make sure that some of the things that the city manager said needs some further explanation. What this council did was, we put on our legislative agenda the question of, or the concern that the Marshals' Office be consolidated with the Sheriff's Office. We did not say to the delegation how that was to be accomplished. And there are two ways, as I understand it, that it can be accomplished. One is, the delegation can introduce legislation that immediately, or at some point consolidates that without a vote. The other thing that they can do is to put legislation in that requires a referendum. I spoke last Friday with two of our state legislators. They have not, let me back up. We did go to the Hometown Connection, which was the discussion with the, the delegation about our agenda. And I think, I believe that we very clearly said to that delegation, it's up to you to make you, the delegation, to make the decision of whether or not there will be a referendum, or whether you will do it as local legislation. It is, it is up to the, our local delegation, state delegation, to make that decision. I spoke with two representatives on Friday of last week. The delegation has not met as a delegation since the Hometown Connection. They have had no discussion amongst themselves of this question. And so no decision has been made about which way the, the delegation is going to go. Of course, the third option that they could have is they could do nothing. They could not introduce any legislation at all. And they have often done that to items that we have had on our legislative agenda. They have chosen not to introduce legislation, putting forth the question that we want to put forth. So one of the things that I would say to people who are listening to this conversation is that at this point in time, this question rests with our state delegation, our state representatives. And if you have an opinion, and I'm, I know a lot of people do, one way or the other, I've heard both of them, then you need to be talking to the state delegation and let them know what you want to do. And it's up to them to find out through the legal, whatever legal channels they need, how it will work, depending on when it goes on the ballot. They could choose not to put it on the ballot in 2020, but to put it on the ballot in, you know, 2022, or some other time. But at this point in time, what this council said was, we want you to consider this and either local legislation that addresses the issue, or a referendum. It is the delegation's decision. So I would encourage our citizens that have an opinion on this to contact your state representative and your state senator for input into this question. That, I have no doubt that that doesn't satisfy a lot of folks. But that's where we are, I, I believe, at this point in time, is that it rests with the state delegation, and we need to have, you need to have, you, if you have an opinion, you need to have that conversation with your, the state delegation member that represents you. That's it.
Well, let me, we've got a few other comments. Let me say to Counselor Thomas, his point, she's exactly right. It didn't say in the resolution that came from council as to how it would be done, but I, I, I thought I remembered a number of folks at that meeting talking about the, the fact that, you know, this started back in 1971, when it was voted to consolidate the county and the city government. And my understanding is the Marshals' Office wasn't created by referendum, it was created by the legislature to be the police force for that county. And the reason that we had put it on, and I'm just giving you my perspective, the reason we had put it on the ballot is because every time it was considered, there was somebody that would have been unseated. So we, we felt like if you're going to unseat a sitting elected official, that has to go before the people. Now, my opinion, the decision was made in 71 for consolidation. So this is the first time, I know it's the first time in the 21 years I've been around this government, that there is nobody currently in that seat. And so I have talked to the, the delegation, many of them, and I urged them to use local legislation. And the reason I did that is because I can't imagine putting somebody through qualifying, raising money, trying to get people to vote for them, and then at the same time have a, a vote coming up to, to take the office away. In my mind, this is a continuation of what started in 1971. There's three other counties that have been consolidated less than five or six years. They've consolidated their entire public safety divisions. That's consolidation. So in my mind, I apologize for my voice, in my mind, and what I have conveyed to the, the delegates that I have spoken with, and I, I felt like it was the way council was leaning, didn't represent it that way, just used it as my opinion, this is the only time, the only opportunity we've had to not harm somebody by, by trying to move forward with consolidation. So Counselor Thomas, I, I did talk to the delegation, and I have urged them to use local legislation, because the timing of this thing is, I think it's unlikely that it would even make the May ballot. I think it would be November ballot. Because by the time it, it's approved by the legislature to put it on a referendum, and then the governor signs it, it's going to be a pretty short window to get it done in March. So in that case, you'd have somebody who had won the office, and you'd still have something coming forward in, in November. That made no sense to me whatsoever. So I just wanted to make sure that folks understood that from my perspective, I thought council had kind of decided that the least painful way and the least damaging to anybody that might be running was local legislation. And I shared my thoughts, that I feel like that's the best way to go. Counselor Crabbe.
Thank you. I have a question for the city attorney, because a lot of people are telling me that it, it was part of the charter review before, why can't we do it that way now? So I looked into the charter, and I was looking through it, and I couldn't see anything about the Marshals' Department. And I think you had mentioned to me, and I would like you to say to, you know, this body, what you had sent to me for clarification.
Right. The only mention in the charter is the continuation of the municipal court itself. The court was created in 1915 by local legislation, and that is continued in our 1971 charter as amended over the years in our current charter. But there's absolutely no mention of the particular officers in that court, other than the judge that I'm aware of. It was all created by local legislation in 1915, and has been amended from time to time. And the officers, officers of the court are the judge, the clerk, and the marshal. And the legislature, as everybody has said here around the table, it's, it's in the General Assembly's hands. Our local delegation, council put the ball in their court as, as to consider at this time a consolidation, because the incumbent has announced he's going to run for another office. But the charter only mentions the continuation of the court itself.
It says nothing, it says nothing about who, what department should administer, well, serve that court.
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, doesn't appear to be any more discussion or questions. Mr. DeBose, if you want to come back at the end of the clerk's agenda for an additional three minutes, you have that right, sir. Thank you for your, thank you for your comments. We'll move on to the city manager's agenda. Mr. Hugley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got yet another legislative agenda item to send to the delegation. It's removal of Courthouse Square restriction, it's an add-on. And we are requesting the legislative delegation introduce legislation to remove any impediments to the sale or lease of the property for non-governmental purposes that may still be in effect from the 1828 Act. In 1828, the legislature granted the block where the government center is located for constructing a courthouse and reserving acreage for a townhouse, city hall, that is. The Act contained a condition that a courthouse be built on the site within 12 months, and went on that the property should never be sold or disposed of, being strictly reserved and kept for use as a courthouse in Columbus, Georgia. And so the request is that our delegation pass a local act, a local act, removing these restrictions from the property to allow for flexibility in planning the possible construction of a new courthouse and CCG administrative offices at other locations with the option of selling or leasing all or part of the current Courthouse Square tract for non-governmental purposes. And so we are asking you to approve that we can...
Motion to approve. Second. A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? If it passes.
Next, Mayor and Counsel, I've got a request for your approval to provide $500,000 to the Development Authority to be utilized for the film fund solely for the purpose of making incentive grants to film producers in order to stimulate job creation in the film industry in our city.
Counselor Davis.
Mr. City Manager, I've got a question pertaining to this. I thought we've already, we've already approved and given our support here, but just walk me through, is this just to, just to confirm it for the record, or is this a new process that we're talking about? If it is a new process, I'd like to understand that a little bit better.
Well, you approved it in the budget, and so we are bringing it forward for you to authorize release of those funds, the $500,000, to the Development Authority. And of course, we, we want to be players in the film industry. And, you know, 90% of films are produced in Atlanta, another 10% or so in Savannah. And we know that we have what it takes to be a player. It's, it's about job creation, and, and so we, we're asking you to allow us to move forward.
Right. Well, let me, let me just go a little bit further. I guess in light of what you just explained, I think the whole council supports it. Well, you know, we all have voted unanimously to, to support this effort. I guess I'm more, I want to understand more the process. Is this just your requesting for us to write one check and just send it over to the Development Authority? Or are there going to be requests being made, and then they would take draws at that time, but yet the funds stay with the city?
Well, in this particular instance, we're asking you to allow us to cut the check for $500,000, $500,000. You know, in the past, and in other situations such as MRSA, when we ask you to approve that, you did in the budget, and we did ask you to do it for $100,000 a year over five years, that was not the case with the film fund. And so we're asking that you release, we release, you authorize us to release the $500,000.
So essentially, we're putting the responsibility, from an accountability standpoint, on the Development Authority, members that we pick, and that they would come up with the process to, I guess, to, to, to analyze or to, to check out these requests as they come.
That's correct. And of course...
Actually, the Film Commission oversees that decision, I believe. It's not really the Development Authority. And their commitment is that any money that goes into a project is the last money in. So, slow down a minute here. So the proposal, the proposal will come from the film fund, or the film, what'd you just say?
These Film Commission, these dollars...
The Film Commission, and then they'll go to the Development Authority and ask for a withdrawal.
I, I don't have all of the details outlined for you, but the monies will go to our Development Authority, who we fund for economic development, and this is for those watching by television, at .25 meals annually. And so we trust them with that .25 meals, and we'll send this $500,000 to them. And we have a seat at the table. We go to the Development Authority meetings, we, we track their expenses, we get the reports, we know how monies, funds are dispersed, and so they may be utilized into the film, CBB or the Film Fund Commission locally to make the draws or present to them, and we'll, we'll, we can get all that information. But, but this is to release all of the money to them.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Thomas.
It's my understanding that the film fund is a, is already set up to make these kinds of grants to film companies that come into Columbus to make films. And in fact, I've, I've had conversations with a couple of the producers who have already benefited from the film fund. And it's the last money in, and they have said to me that because that money was available from the film fund, I wish they'd name it something else, that's hard to say, from the film fund, that that's what was the deciding factor in them coming to Columbus. And one of the examples was out at the Flat Rock Studios, the film fund furnished an office with, with office equipment. And the producer said to me, I didn't have to worry about office equipment, I didn't have to go get it, I didn't have to rent it, I didn't have to make sure somebody came and picked it up. It's not a big deal, but it's something that if you guys had not done that, we would have had to do that. And so the film fund, I think, is, is really significant in drawing... And so the Film Fund, I think, is, is really significant in drawing productions to Columbus. And this, working with the Development Authority and the Film Fund, would be additional, in addition to what is currently in the Film Fund, so I understand. So, I, I think it's a, it's a terrific idea. Several of the films that have been filmed in Columbus have used Columbus folks as extras. They've used them as actors in the films. They've used some of our production folks. And so it has brought jobs and job money into Columbus through the, that would come through the Development Authority.
Well, and, and let me just say, and I'm glad I've got all this help here with me tonight. They've voluntarily stepped up. And Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge, she attends all of the Development Authority meetings on my behalf. And then we've got the President, CEO of the Convention Visitors Bureau. But the private sector has even invested, and I want them to speak. And I want you to tell them all about the studio, the investment that has been made there. Because we are serious about the job creation and providing opportunities. CSU is involved, and I want you to tell them what they've done. And this is for TV, because I know you know most of this. But I'm going to yield to you, and then I want Mr. Peter Bowden to, to come to the mic.
Sure, this $500,000 is the city's contribution for the job creation of the Film Fund, which is a total of $5 million, $4.5 million from the private sector. This is the city's contribution. This is coming from economic development, so it's meant for job creation. Those funds flow through the Development Authority. So this resolution is directing them that this is to be used for job creation in Columbus, Georgia, for the benefit of the taxpayers in Columbus, Georgia. The Film Fund represents the region, so our, our funds need to be utilized for Columbus, Georgia. So this resolution is just documenting how those funds will be utilized. But I'll let Mr. Bowden kind of talk about more specifically related to the Film Fund and the commission.
All right, thank you all. Yes, there is a, there is a process, there's a grant application process, excuse me, in order for producers to qualify for this money. And it is over, over reviewed by a Film Fund Board. That's even more of a tangled phrase there. And so there is a process. The Georgia Film Academy helps us with this. We have an entertainment attorney that works with us on this as well. We have representative in California that works with us. And they vet this, these, these projects for us. And to give you an example of what has happened so far, we've had, we've had two films since the Film Fund launched officially in January. We've had two projects, two films made here in Columbus. And it's about job creation. So we've had 18 interns at Columbus State University go through the Film Academy program who are now certified to work in film. Our goal is to keep them here in Columbus to work in film as we build this process. The goal over the next three years is to have 10 films made in Columbus. And based on the strategy, it will create and certify and lure five, or create 500 jobs in our city to work in film. And just to let you know what has happened, again, just with these two films, the, there's been a total budget of these two projects of 9.3 million dollars. Below the line spend, and these are, this is the money that is reinvested back in Columbus because of these films, is over $5 million, just in two films over the last several months. In the pipeline, prospects that we currently have lined up, there are $41.7 million budgeted for film that we are prospecting with a below the line spend. Again, that's money being reinvested or spent in the community of 6.5 million dollars. And that's just with the nine projects that we currently have in queue for 2020. Now, this is a, this is a speculative business that we're involved in. So there's a lot of momentum going because of the private sector stepping up. And this investment and this contribution on behalf of the consolidated government continues that momentum over the next, over the next cycle as we can continue to recruit film.
Counselor, I hope we are sort of, kind of answering your question. And I think it's good that you asked a question or questions around the table because the citizens here and those watching by television, as this will be rebroadcast, they need to know this.
Well, thank you, City Manager. I wanted, we've had a lot of conversations over the past, but that's been a while back. So, you know, we've all had various conversations with certain individuals representing this, this effort. Like I said, we've, we're in unity in supporting this unanimously.
Yes.
My concern, I think I was just a little sensitive to understanding the, the fund flow, the flow of funds and accountability aspect. But when you said that we have a seat at the table-
Oh, yeah.
-that makes me feel a lot better. Because at the end of the day, I mean, this is a worthwhile effort. Everything that's being said, I think, is, is great, and we need to continue it. But we still need to realize that this is coming from property taxes and the taxpayers. It's their money. We just want to make sure that the process is being done appropriately and that we've got an eye on it. And what you just shared with me makes me feel a lot better. I personally thought that it was going to be held, and then there would be requests that were going to be made, and then it would be handed over in, as the requests are going to be made. But I'm okay with this because you're telling me that there will be representatives at the table along with the decision makers, which would be, what I'm hearing is the Development Authority members.
Absolutely.
Counselor Huff?
Deputy City Manager Hodge is at every single meeting. I go to some of the meetings.
Right.
Yes, thank you.
Counselor Huff?
All right, Director Bowden, Peter Bowden. I just wanted to clear my head. I've been on board since the beginning of all of this. I just want to understand the flow of money also. When we talked about this, you mentioned to me that you all had a group that went before the film industry group to show that, to get the information and to bring it back to us about what it took to be a player in the game. So in the process of the monies, I'm okay with the monies. I was just trying to get the flow of it also. I thought that the monies were being created to show that we were wanting to be a major player, but was flowing through your office and not Development Authority. So one part is coming through your office and one part is coming through Development Authority?
The Development Authority actually holds the money because of their nonprofit status.
Okay.
So this, from the private sector's perspective, this is a charitable contribution. From their, they're working in film with us. The Film Fund Board, which operates under my office, they vet the project. If it's approved, then we make that request, forward that request to the development corporation, Development Authority, and they in turn issue the funds to the filmmaker or whoever we're working with directly.
Okay, I'm good, thank you.
And let me just say-
Justice Crabbe?
I'm sorry.
Good, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say for, just for those watching, the Columbus Convention and Visitors Bureau provides their annual audit to my office annually. And so, and then I in turn make sure that our finance department gets that audit. So just know that when he says the disbursement to his office, he has to provide my office a copy of his annual audit.
Thank you. Okay, I'm still, I still do not understand, since there is the audit and there is Pam on the board and in all of these meetings, why the funds need to be transferred out? Why can't they just be a draw? Why can't it stay with us? And then they go through the process and everything, and then they, you know, they talk to Pam about having the draw. We've already approved the $500,000. And so, you know, it just stays where it is instead of it being transferred into another account?
The response to that would just be a timing issue for them to request the funds from us and us to turn around. It could be a timing issue of something that they want to have the funds released to that producer. So it would be just a timing issue. They, we turn over the quarter mill to them as soon as we collect it. That's transmitted to them. They do an annual audit as well. And so they maintain the funds and utilize the funds for the purpose of the Development Authority. And they do submit an audit to us at the end of the year. So this would be handled the same way.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. It is an exciting industry. I know Counselor House and I were speaking to some high school students today at Shaw High School. And one of the seniors said where she was going to school was to get her Nexus degree in film from Columbus State. So we're keeping talented young folks home by going through Columbus State University in two years to get a Nexus degree that allows them to go to work in the film industry. So that's- We've got a motion now, in a second? All right, motion, second for approval, or is there any discussion? Bruce, can you cue it? Counselors, you can register your votes, please. Missing a few? Has everybody voted? Who we missing? Y'all got, y'all want to vote? Okay, we're still missing one, aren't we? Who did not vote? There you go. Now we're good. All right, thank you.
Mayor, I've got some purchases. First, I've got a mini hydraulic excavator. It's a replacement vehicle. It's $34,595 for Rainwater Division.
Excuse me, Counselor Garrett?
I move for approval of A through H unless anybody wants one pulled.
There's a motion, a second for A through H. Is there any item that somebody would like pulled for more discussion?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I want to actually, I feel the need to pull H.
Pull H?
And then we're going to explain H.
So A through G then?
All right, so the motion's been changed to A through G. There's a second. Any of the items A through G that anybody would like further discussion on? All right, Mr. City Manager, if you'd go through those. But Bruce, if you'd cue it for A through G, can we do that? Or do we need-
Got a mini hydraulic excavator, replacement vehicle, $34,595. I've got a full-size crew cab, four-wheel-drive pickup truck, replacement vehicle, $26,028. Got an inmate work van, replacement vehicle for park services. It's, there's 10 of them, and unit price is $45,930. Total, $459,300. I've got engineering services for J.R. Allen Parkway, US 80 corridor study that you're familiar with. And it is with Stan Tech Consulting. And it's within the $200,000 budgeted for the project. I've got annual technical support and maintenance for the notification module for Metra. It's $10,137.75. We've got master services agreement renewal for public works communications software app. It's $10,208. And I've got repair services for garbage truck, $10,511. And Mayor and Council on H, I am going to, you want, you're going to take action on those first?
They've already voted.
Okay, I'm sorry. And so for H, I want the Deputy City Manager to talk about H, but it's space planning and programming and design professional services for the Government Center project. And so I'm going to ask her to speak first.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So this is the first of the RFPs that were issued for the Government Center and the planning stages. The committee, evaluation committee met, reviewed all the proposals and bring this particular proposal forward for your approval. This is with HIRI. They have partnered with a local architect, Barnes Gibson. Tonight, we have the principal in charge, Doug Kleppen, along with Ray Holyfield and with Barnes Gibson Architects, Will Barnes and Paul Gibson. They're our local architects. They have partnered to provide a response to this RFP. We're very excited to get started. There's a lot of work that has to be done in a very short period of time. And I would like Doug Kleppen to just come forward and give you just a little bit of information about their firm. They're a specialist in courthouses, which we felt was very important to this project that will be once in a lifetime for most of us as far as the Government Center. So, Mr. Kleppen?
Good evening, thank you.
Good evening.
Again, my name is Doug Kleppen. I'm an architect and partner with HIRI. For those of you not familiar with our, our company, first, we are wholly owned by CBRE, which is a real estate, a global real estate company. But HIRI started in 1952 in Athens, Georgia, father, son. Headquarters are in Atlanta. We are a 500-plus professional service organization and featuring architects, engineers, interior designers, and program managers. I run the justice studio for them. And again, we are flattered and honored that we were selected to, to help advise the county and with their options on how to move forward with that campus or with the replacement facility.
We're excited. We're thankful that you're here and look forward to, look forward to some fruitful efforts coming out of that group.
Well, and, and Mr. Mayor and Council, let me just further state that one of the things we mandated, I mean, this is potentially, well, it's not potentially, it's a, it's a huge project. And we wanted to go on a national search, but we wanted to ensure mandate that we have local participation. And, and I just want to note again, just, first of all, they've got a 500-person architect, engineer, and interior design, cost estimated and program management firm. 500 person, that's important to us. The firm has a 15-person autonomous national justice design studio consisting of architects and designers wholly dedicated to justice facility planning and design. That's important to us. And then the other important component would be the local sub consultants on the project. Barnes Gibson Partners from Columbus, Georgia will serve as design manager. Wave your hand if you will. French and Associates, who have done, the French and Associates, we've been involved with them for many years, will provide site engineering, landscape design. Larry French is not here. White Engineering LLC, Columbus, Georgia, will provide structural engineering services. And so Barnes Gibson Partners, French and Associates, and White Engineering have a 20-plus-year history of teamwork on Columbus building projects. Recently, the firm worked together to complete the CSU, Columbus State University, College of Education and Health Professional Building on Broadway. And so I wanted to hold that one and, and share this firm, HIRI, and the local component that goes with it. And so what we're asking, I'm asking tonight is that you authorize the execution of a contract with CBRE HIRI, Inc., for space planning and programming and design professional services for the Government Center project. The recommended firm, this firm's cost proposal for Phase 1 is within the $1 million budgeted for this project. And we're also requesting that Council authorize the negotiation of costs for the remaining phases of the space planning and program and design, and design professional services. Phase 1 of this project will be professional services for programming and planning to determine the current and future growth space needs of the judicial branch, administrative agencies, and law enforcement agencies. This information will be used to assess options for potential locations of the project. Programming services will include meeting, work sessions, and documentation to gather information from the city's project manager and all agency representatives to reach consensus on a program of spaces. I wanted to read all of that into the record. I wanted those watching by television to hear it. so that we know exactly what we are asking you for tonight.
Counselor Thomas?
Mr. City Manager, at one point, we authorized or talked about a judicial consultant. Is that what, the last part of what you described? Would that be the judicial consultant to make sure that all of the judicial pieces are what we need?
I'm sorry. I'm going to let the deputy city manager respond to that.
So this particular architectural firm has in-house judicial consultants. So they're part of their team and have worked on judicial projects for thirty-five years. So that particular individual is not here this evening, but he will be assisting with the judicial planning. But they're in-house consultants with...
My question is, we authorized, I thought, not, we authorized looking for the company to do the overall, but then we also, didn't we authorize a judicial consultant separately?
In the RFP...
And so my question is, has that sort of rolled together?
Yes, in the RFP, we requested a judicial consultant. This particular firm has in-house judicial consultants and doesn't need to hire an expert judicial consultant. They have that in-house.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we were not duplicating and those kinds of things. So I'm good with it. I just wanted to make sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Right. And so, Mr. Mayor, I'm asking for your approval to proceed tonight.
Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. City Manager, we talked about a feasibility study and a detailed operational budget analysis. Is this the organization or the team here that's going to be doing that for us?
Yes, yes. They'll be providing budgets and all the information for the options that Counsel has approved and anything else that Counsel wants them to evaluate. This firm will do that.
Okay, well, I just want to take this opportunity while you're here. I may not see you guys again. But I want to make this point, and I've said it from day one. Whatever we do, it's kind of like we've got to build around our operating budget, okay? We have the capital, we have the dollars to build, okay? But we don't have the additional revenue. Got very limited funds to cover operating costs. So what am I saying? Whatever you guys do, you got to keep in mind that you have to design this stuff around our operating budget. Because I don't see, as this council member and what we deal with in the budget every year, how we're going to be able to take on additional operating costs. We've talked about that for a long time at this council table. So that's got to be a key component of all this. I still don't, we're by law, by the way, by law, policy, that that has to be presented before we can build anything. And that's a good policy to have on the books. We've learned some lessons in the past, but we told the citizens that we will not build anything else in this city until we understand what the operating budget is and what it's going to cost. Because we cannot afford to build all this stuff and then go back out and raise property taxes. We can't do that. And we're right on the border of our sixty-day fund balance, which is our reserve. And our finances are in good shape. We just don't have the ability to take on extra operating costs. If we did have extra money, we would try to meet the challenge and pay in all our employees what they deserve. But in this case, I think it's going to be a grave mistake if you guys get to that point and we don't understand that part of this whole process. So I just wanted to share that upfront. I may not get the opportunity to say that again. I've said it at this table, but you guys weren't here. So we're going to give this to you to take off. Please keep that in mind. That's my only comments.
All right, thank you, sir. No further comments. We did have, Counselor Woodson made a motion. I did not hear a second?
Yes, Pops.
Okay, Pops had a second, so it's motion and second. Is there any further discussion? All right, Bruce, can you? Counselors, please register your votes. Missing one. There we go. It is unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. Mayor, I've got two updates. I've got a long-range transportation plan. Director Rick Jones is going to come with that. And then we'll have the monthly finance update from our finance director, Angelica Alexander. I hope this is not an indication of how long you plan to talk.
No, about half that. Rick, you got ten minutes and I'm going to hit this button that opens that trap door up there.
That's better than the offer I got in some places, so I'll take what I get. Good evening to you. I want to take the opportunity and come and present to you, though, this updating of the metropolitan transportation plan. You need to know about it. There are several things you're going to need to know about before this presentation is over with. But I want to share it with you because this is how we deal with transportation planning in this community and in this region as a whole as well. Just to give you a background real quick, we are the Columbus-Fenix City MPO. We do the planning, transportation planning, not only for Columbus, but for Phoenix City, parts of Russell, parts of Lee and all of Chattahoochee. So we're involved in all of that from that standpoint. The reason the MPO is there is because we deal with all the federal dollars that come into the community itself. We follow that money through and make sure that it is spent wisely as federal highway and GDOT demand of us from that point. And of course, we also provide technical experience as well. The MPO itself has started back in nineteen sixty-four when both governors of Alabama and Georgia agreed to a compact on that. We're charged, make sure we maintain the transportation needs. We are housed in the consolidated government. We are not actually part of the consolidated government. The staff in the planning department acts as the staff also for the MPO itself. And you should know there are also three separate boards here. There's a policy coordinating committee, a technical coordinating committee and a citizen advisory committee. And they all play an important role in what we do on a day-to-day basis. This black outline on this map shows the boundaries that we actually take in place in dealing with the area itself, the MPO. We go into, only to a small part, the southern part of Harris County itself. In the past, we have extended invitation for them to join the MPO, but this time they have not decided to come forward with that aspect as well. So why are we doing this? We're mandated by federal highway every five years to update this plan. Federal highway is kind of funny. They, when they give you money, they expect you to spend it the way they want you to spend it. And so we have to play by their rules and that's what we're trying to do here. We have, in doing that, we have to show them how we're going to spend that money basically in that five-year period or really in a longer period, really, it's more of a twenty, twenty-five-year period. The last update was actually done in fourteen, so it's due now. We got to have this thing completed by December, and I want to show you that. Now, I realize for the most part, none of us in this room, including me standing right here, can actually read that chart. I gave you a handout and we'd be glad to share with anybody else who wants to see it up close. The only reason I want to present it to you is I want you to understand the magnitude of the work that goes into putting this document together. As the city manager has already indicated to you, this is some light reading for you to take home tonight. And we expect you to have it read by the next council meeting. But I want you to know what the effort is and going with that. I want to share a quick story with you. Back in summer of last year, at what we call a Gampo meeting, which is the Georgia Association of MPOs, federal highway and GDOT had already given me a heads-up on this. They said, "We don't think you can do this project in-house, that you need to hire a consultant," which meant spending a minimum of another two-hundred thousand dollars, which meant we had, we'd also not only had to find money from the Columbus side, but also from the Phoenix City side and other areas as well to share their costs. And we told them flat out, "We can do this in-house and we can make it happen." What you see here is the work of last eighteen months, typically by one individual. I'm going to point her out to you and call her out for you. That's Linda Temples. Linda's done all the heavy lifting on this project to make this thing work. Instead of us having to go out and spend, again, another two, three-hundred thousand dollars for this project, we took that in-house and saved that money for other purposes in this government and throughout the region itself. And the importance of this is, of course, that, like I said, we had to have this document approved by the policy committee itself by December sixteenth on here, as the chart shows you. We've got three more meetings in this month to deal with. We are on a very tight timeline. In fact, wasn't necessarily planned this way, but we ran another public meeting tonight concurrently with this one just so we could meet the timetable involved with that to allow our citizens to come out. And we've also had other public meetings I can share with you as well over the last eighteen months in terms of what we try to do to make sure we heard from the public. This is one of the most important slides you're going to see, really, if you were talking about transportation planning in anywhere. Projects just don't happen overnight. They just don't, they just don't come real quickly, especially if you're dealing with federal dollars. On an average, and my average may have gone up a little bit here, on average, though, if you're using federal dollars, it's going to take you about seven years to see a project completed. I've said that from day one and I'll continue to say that. Federal highway doesn't like for me to say it. GDOT doesn't like for me to say it, but I'm telling you. Anytime we use federal funds, it just slows down the entire process involved with that. We have to identify, though, if we're going to use federal money, we have to identify them in this plan first. We got to establish them, where they're coming from, what they're supposed to be doing. Federal highway now is also requiring that they have a rhyme and reason for the project being developed as a whole. You've got to have a real purpose for that project. It's got to be based something on some safety or on capacity. No longer can you just say, "We want to build this stretch of road or widen it out." They are now demanding what they call performance planning, that we actually look at certain items in here. All the projects we're going to show you here in just a second meet that criteria. And then if you, again, we can't build a project unless, with federal dollars, unless it's in this plan. Now, that's not to say we can't build projects. We're building projects now under the T-Slot program that doesn't have any federal dollars involved with it. But just know that if you're going to use federal dollars, you're going to have to play by their rules and you're going to have to go through this whole process. Federal highway basically provides us eighty percent funding for any project we got going on. We're responsible for the other twenty percent. GDOT and ALDOT don't have a real play in that from the standpoint from our side. Dealing with Phoenix City, there may be a match required of them, back to ALDOT and that. But we have a twenty percent match requirement here involved with all that. As I told you, there are three committees that work on the MPO. The citizens advisory committee is made up of citizens that volunteer and come in and try to give us some direction, some guidance on what projects we should be looking at and tell us what we're really not doing at the same time, which is a good thing for us. Technical coordinating is made up of all the professionals, basically the engineers, the planners and so forth, that come in and make sure the projects work. You need to understand, this is a coordination also, though, not just from the Georgia side, but from the Alabama side as well, involved with all that. And then dealing with policy coordinating committee is really made up of elected officials and we have commissioners on there from GDOT and ALDOT and so forth, more by proxy than anything else. But that policy committee works and makes that final determination and makes the final determination on the plan you have in front of you eventually here in December. They're the ones that actually vote on the plan and make it go from there. There's the elements here. We got to identify things. We have to focus on projects. We have to articulate the regional land use and things of that nature. And we also have to estimate costs. You'll see in the book and in the presentation in just a second. We have to provide an actual cost estimate, what we think, not only for this year or next year, but at least looking out for the next twenty-five to thirty years as well. And we do that by indicating a two percent increase each year to make those projects happen. These are all the elements that are really actually involved in the plan itself in terms of all the data collection, all the existing and future conditions itself, the input analysis. There's also a big chunk of this, I should say, comes from GDOT and they actually do the computer modeling for us on the transportation side. We give all the information to them about what projects we see are happening, what's going on population-wise, what goes on land use-wise. They in turn come back and give us what they think is going to happen either with a, you know, enter a no-bill scenario where we don't do anything, make any improvements, to making all the improvements we want to talk about over the next ten, fifteen, twenty-year timeframe. And they get any information to us, so we have some understanding about what we should be trying to achieve and how we should be spending our money wisely. Last but certainly not least on that list is citizen input. We do make a concerted effort to make sure that our citizens have the opportunity to have input to this. In this particular case, we not only have public hearings in Columbus, we went to Casita and we also went to Phoenix City to make sure those folks have the opportunity to talk to staff and let them know about their needs transportation-wise. These are all the elements on here in terms of highways and bikes and airports. All this, this is a total package in terms of what we look at in terms of transportation needs in this region for some time to come. And then again, this is talking about the regional traffic model from GDOT and things about, we also have financial forecasting involved with this. We are, just like anybody else's budget, we are given a certain amount of money that we believe that we're going to receive from the federal government over this time span. And we have to stay within that cap. We have never hit that cap and sometimes it's like a half a billion dollars when it's all said and done over the next timeframe. Right now, we're probably at more like that two-hundred-and-thirty range rather than the five-hundred range itself in terms of actual projects themselves. Again, public involvement here and using and making sure that we had all the database. We use CCGTV. We advertise. We put it on Facebook. We got, we became somewhat obnoxious, I think, in some regards in terms of getting the word out to folks here to make sure that happens. And then again, all the public meetings are open. That is not to say that we had, like I said, we held the last one tonight at the annex. That is not to say that folks cannot still give us input, give us information about what's going on, what they'd like to see happen. We have a thirty-day comment period that's going to start here real soon that we allow for the public to make their comments. The document itself that you have in front of you is actually on our website as well and is easily accessible to anybody. So this is what you really want to hear about, what kind of projects are we talking about and how we're going to implement them over the next several years. This is, the first one I want to share with you tonight is the widening of Buena Vista Road. This really runs from Witten to Elges. This is really the second phase of the current Spiderweb project. We actually have that project somewhat engineered already. And so now this is, we're going to a three-lane segment involved with that, make that happen. But we're looking now, we don't have the actual funding identified, so we're putting it into this document for funding consideration through the federal highway. Should be one pursue that. So that project's in there and the little hotspots you see on the roadway, those are accidents sites, major intersections along there. And the legend here gives you some idea of what kind of problems we're having. It's really red, like you see at Witten and Buena Vista there. We've got some issues there with part, not part, with wrecks and so forth going on through accidents happening. This is Buena Vista from Witten to Elges. There's another segment here. This is the Brown Avenue-Casita Road and Andrews for the idea of putting a roundabout there at Andrews and Brown Avenue. Again, if we're going to utilize federal dollars, this is the project we're looking at trying to make that happen with. Not to say, again, we couldn't find other funding sources, but that's what we're talking about. This is McBride and Floyd. This is a bad area in terms of the intersection being offset there. Makes the signals go a little crazy at times in terms of trying to signalize and synchronize them. It might really align those two roadways up to make that intersection better. Buena Vista there, Floyd and McBride. Same thing on Buena Vista. It's at Hunt and Wright, looking at trying to improve that intersection as well by aligning those roadways up as well. This looks real simple on a map. I understand that and I'm not taking that for granted by any stretch of the imagination. Just know that we've got to identify these issues first and then try to figure out how we're going to solve them once we go from there. This is one that you really need to have on your radar. It has no funding involved with us at all. This is the actual bridge replacement, the Oglethorpe Bridge going across the Chattahoochee River. This is not science fiction. This is not pie in the sky way off. They've already, GDOT is fully in charge of this project. They have already hired the consultants and brought them on board. We've already met with them at least once to let them know of our concerns about this project. The biggest concern is we have told them in those uncertain terms, we don't want a plain vanilla bridge going back there. We want something that's going to be a signature piece for this community. So when you know when you come into Columbus, you will ride in Columbus, Georgia. We're going to see how far that goes, but just know that that project's coming. It probably will be here within the next five years to make that happen. So that bridge will be replaced completely, the Oglethorpe Bridge itself. By the same token, out there, County Line and Mahappy Road, this is an interchange off of Manchester Expressway that needs some tender loving care because the roadway itself has not been improved probably since the early sixties at least, maybe longer than that. This is just basically the roadway with the interchange when the expressway itself was built. It needs to be widened. The bridge needs to be taken care of. It's one of those we've identified that we think needs some action now. We know that we're going to get some development pressure from the Harris County side of this thing. So we're trying to make sure that we can accommodate the traffic and make sure we do it safely at the same time going from there. This is Buena Vista Road from Linden Circle to Floyd Road. This is Buena Vista Road from Linden Circle to Floyd Road. We have, there are projects in this document, we have to show that because there are federal funds involved with this. You may know that we are right now doing the interchange at 185 at Buena Vista as Adversify Diamond under our T-Slot program. And the limits of that project really stop about where Pembroke Drive is now, maybe a little further than that. In fact, I think it actually runs down to the McDonald's there, the sidewalk and so forth. Nonetheless, we have to show, because federal highways identified this project, we have to show this as part of the plan. They're showing here going from four lanes to six lanes. We have no intention this time to do this project. I'll tell you that straight up right now. But we do have to show this as part of the deal in dealing with federal highway. This runs again from right there at Pembroke at 185, the interchange at 185 all the way out to Floyd Road. This was originally part of the project when we were talking with federal highway about redoing that interchange. And it's just part of that deal that we still have to keep it in the plan. And there's a couple more like that I want to share with you as well. Casita at North Lumpkin, this is the other roundabout we're talking about constructing right there. To accommodate that, we had one at Brown, we also got one there really at Andrews itself and looking at that. So that's another roundabout for that area itself in dealing with that. This is the widening of Casita Road from Tenth all the way back down to North Lumpkin Road itself. This would be going, probably going to a three-lane segment. This is the roadway we think needs some improvement. It will not be part of the improvement project for the interchange at 185, Casita and Oak Casita. That project will actually stop on the other side of the new roundabout. This is a project that we need to identify now that needs some improvement, needs some tender loving care as well in terms of improvements to that roadway itself. This is Dillingham Street Bridge, this is calling for the restoration of the bridge itself, not taking it down, the historic bridge. We are trying to provide funds for the restoration of that bridge to bring it back up to standards. It's still heavily traveled, it's still a key entry park to the transportation system in this community. And we just need to go back and put some work on that bridge as well. This is Far Road, widening Far from Oak Casita back to St. Mary's. This project is still going to remain intact for the time being. This is one of those projects we've had in the book for some time. I say it's going to stay intact for right now because you know that we are talking about the interchange going in at Casita and Oak Casita and 185. When that happens, the traffic patterns may change so much that we may not need to widen Far. I suspect right now a lot of the traffic that we're getting on Far itself is folks coming out of those neighborhoods and going north, trying to hit St. Mary's interchange and going south again from that. I believe when that happens, I think we're going to see Far Road being a little bit different in terms of what amount of traffic it carries. So we're going to leave it in the books right now because it may need funding eventually, but we don't think to that extent. This is the widening of Forest Road from Macon to Woodrow Farm. This is one we've always been talking about for some time now. We've actually had gone, had the engineering done on this project. We can find other additional funding for it. We just want to make sure though, if we need to, we can make this eligible for federal dollars as well involved with that. This is just a simple bridge crossing out there at Macon Road just to show you that there are other projects, simple projects that we probably won't have anything to say about. This is more of a GDOT project, but again, because it's federal dollars, we have to include it in this document itself. This is the, this is the streetscape of South Lumpkin from Victory to the National Entry Museum. This is the project, I know that Council Woodson has been asking for it sometime. This is in the books now for us to go forward with it. Should we decide we want to pursue federal dollars for it. We recognize the need for it and we want to go forward with that. But just know, Council Woodson, this project is in the makings, just want to let you know.
Thank you. What do you have?
This is, this is again one that we have to still keep the funding involved with. This is out there at Veterans Parkway from Turnberry on out to State Route 315, Harris County. This is actually a T-Slot project, but we still again have to keep the funding available for that in just in the event that we needed and had to show it back. The one time there was T-Slot money matched up with federal dollars. That has gone away, it's all state and T-Slot funds for that project. But we still have to identify it in the plan itself. This is the bridge going over Weracoa Creek, right here at Thirteenth and Midway, almost close to Thirteenth and Thirteenth, a little small bridge that needs to be replaced eventually. And we're providing funding for that. The same is out there, this is the project that's moving forward also, this is all GDOT money here. This is the, well, it's not really something of the interchange right there at Miller and Manchester Expressway, that bridge that goes across Miller Road there. GDOT is in the mix now, getting ready to come forward with that project and actually replace those two bridges over there. What we have asked for consideration on this project though is, they make sure, they make that bridge wide enough for us to be able to widen Miller in the event we shouldn't want to do that in the near future. And I want to show you another project why that may make an impact from our standpoint. But just know that this project is coming forward, it's a GDOT project totally funded through GDOT and they're federal sources, so that project's moving up in that. This is St. Mary's Road, it runs from really from right there at North Oakley, got over here Robin Road to North Star. This is the one that's been on the books for some time also. This project may change as well because of the interchange down at Casita, Oak Casita going in. It is shown one time it's four lanes. If it ever gets built, I'm sure it's going to be more of a three-lane segment because of the constrictions we've got on the property out there. We've got a full cemetery on the south side of that and then we've got residential in the north. And I don't know that we already have a need for four lanes going through there at this time. But again, we've got it on the books in case we want to do this project. But again, that's one project we're going to have to hold back on, I think, until we see what the interchange itself actually does from that. Excuse me?
Three lanes.
Three lanes, yes sir, three lanes we would actually propose. It's got down there for four, but we'd actually advocate for three on that one. This is Veterans Parkway from Old Moon to Turnberry. This is one of those little quirks in the federal highway system that kind of aggravates me. And most folks do not know this, this is the project that's just been completed, of course. And you've seen it, it's all four lanes going up there just past the North Side High School and whatnot there. When federal highway got involved with this, this is why it takes so long. When federal highway got involved with it, they said, "Oh no, we don't want you to build a four-lane, we want you to build a six-lane roadway out there." And we said, "No, we don't have a need for six lanes at this time. We will buy enough right-of-way for a six-lane when it does occur and then we'll build six lanes." But right now, we only need four lanes. That's why you see this money still in the books here. It's not a whole lot of money in the grand scheme of things, but it is there for that purpose whenever they decide or whenever that happens. It may happen, I don't know, the next five years, it may never happen, I don't know. But again, we have it set aside there if we need it, we can go forward from that standpoint. This is Whitesville Road, widening of Whitesville Road from Willsey Road to Williams. This is looking at going, we said four lanes in here for this purpose. We are probably looking more along the lines of three lanes when it does occur. But we think the project needs to be looked at and start moving forward with it as well in terms of how we make that happen. So that money has been established, at least get that project started. This is another one of those projects that doesn't make a lot of sense to me, but it's in the books no matter because of dealing with federal highway here. Nothing against federal highway, I'll get phone calls tomorrow from them, I'm sure. But the widening of Willsey Road from Whitesville to Bradley Park. You may recall when, this is a long story. But you may recall when Columbus Park started open, we were trying to accelerate the widening of Willsey Boulevard itself so we could match up at that time. And we thought we were at that stage of the game where we would meet, at least be close to about the time they opened, we'd have the road completed. That didn't happen because federal highway came back and said, "Well, you're a logical terminal, where the road project actually ends, you need to expand it on down and send it on down to Bradley Park." We had it in Whitesville and they went on down to Bradley Park. And they still, they still say, "We think you need four lanes out there." We haven't done anything with this project because we don't think we need the project, to be honest, right now at this point. We know we've got capacity out there now for the roadway to handle the traffic. And one day, it may require four lanes. But we have not, we've left this on the books so we can have that conversation. But we have not gone forward that project at all. This is Williams Road, this is really from Veteran thrown out to 185 itself, well, in Franciscan Woods and so forth. But this is a project that we actually had under design, we've completed it design. It's just now from our standpoint, finding the local funding to make that project come alive and work for us. If we cannot find it for that, then we always fall back to the federal dollars and we've already got programmed in the plan itself in doing that. But that's a project we think needs to come forward as well. And then right there at Williams Road and 185 is the, needs to have some improvements done to that off-ramp and on-ramp going out there. We made, GDOT has made some minor improvements, but there needs to be other things that need to be done. We are pretty much stepping back from that because it actually involves federal highway and the interstate itself in terms of impacting that. And we're going to really work with GDOT and others to make that project come about because it really is a federal project more than it is anything on a local level. But just know we're working towards that. This is the one I was talking about with Miller Road Bridge a while ago, we think needs to be looked at again. At one time, we talked about this and it got pushed aside and then we now are bringing it back to you again. This is actually, would actually extend Woodrow Farm Road over Manchester Road and tie it back into Miller. If you're ever out there at five o'clock, six o'clock in the afternoon on any given day, you know that intersection at Miller and Milgen gets pretty dicey at times. And the traffic has been known to back up, folks going on to the, trying to get on to the expressway. It gets a little tight there as well. We had an incident the other last week, I think it was last week or this week, where we had an accident on the expressway and it basically blocked all the traffic back on to Miller itself. And it made a real mess out there for quite some time. So that's a project we think needs to happen. University Avenue is one we've actually talked to Columbia State University about. In fact, they actually brought it to us and talked about going on a road diet and making that a three-lane segment with bike lanes and sidewalks and so forth and the other improvements. We think that has merit, but we told them at the time, we still have the money. So we got to, if we're going to do this, we got to program it right now at least through this federal program. As I said, this is our, this is our meeting we had, this is our last meeting tonight. This is typical ad we ran in the papers and on our Facebook page. And folks can see by here the mailing address or the email address, if they have any comments or questions about the plan, they certainly can address it to this mailing address or consider us, give us a phone call or just send it by email, either way on that. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I will conclude that, my conversation.
A couple of questions, Mr. Jones, Councilor Huff?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Jones, since we have that JRL in study, I guess, happening or about to happen and that may generate some project or ideas, how does that flow into this? Does it have to wait five years or can you amend it along the way or what?
No, no, you don't. Great question, I should have led off with that too. This thing, this document that you have in front of you, it's not etched in stone. It is a living document for the most part in the sense that we can amend this thing anytime we want to. In fact, probably by the next meeting after we adopt this, we'll probably amend it again because things, conditions do change. But if the study comes back and gives us some idea about what we should be trying to achieve on JRL Parkway and how we go about doing that, we certainly will amend it and look at adding it into this document itself. I should say this real quickly also, once it gets into this document, that's not the end of it. You have to identify the funding for it and then once the funding is identified, it goes into what's called the Transportation Improvement Program. And that way, we can actually start programming the construction and engineering of the project itself. This is just the first step, but thank you for the question. Because you need to know this is not etched in stone.
Councilor Huff?
Yes, a quick question, could we pull the PowerPoint back up on the Far Road?
On which one?
It's right after Dillingham.
Which one you want to see?
Far Road.
Okay, give me just a second, it's back here.
Yeah, it's not too far. On the piece of coming out there from Roman Drive, Ridgefield and Wandering Lane. So is the concept that when you come out, especially down Ridgefield, that the residents will have a choice to turn right, to go back to St. Mary's or turn left and access 185 at Oak City Road?
Well, this is really not even a concept, Councilor Huff. This is just an illustration really to identify the project limits really more than anything else. We don't have any design on this road. As you may, as some of you may know already, that when the interchange comes into play here, this roadway will actually go like this and cut back down this way further away from the interchange itself. That's going to change some of the action out there, but I don't know that right now what we're looking at in terms of any impact to those existing neighborhoods. At worst case, I think you're going to three lanes out there. I don't think you can afford to do anything else monetarily or just politically, and you need to be honest about it. But we don't have a concept for it, this is just to give you an idea about what the project limits are and what we want to do with it.
Is there spacing between those three roads without too much impact to have a center turn lane or something?
I believe so for a three-lane segment, yes sir, I think so. I think you can do it with minimal impact for the right-of-way. That's always our case, what we're trying to achieve here. But I would think you probably could do that.
Because I think once they have access to 185 from Oak Casita Road, the three lanes is about as much as we'll probably need.
And I really think we're going to see a divide in that traffic from St. Mary's and Casita because I think it's going to take a lot of that traffic off, a lot of that pressure off of St. Mary's, I hope, anyway.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Woodson?
Yes, I want to go to the South Lumpkin Road.
You're testing my memory here now because I'm not sure which way this thing is.
That's okay.
Go back.
Go back?
Yeah, that's it.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, this here, I understood what you told Councilor Huff, the project can be changed, amended or taken out of here. With this being placed on this program here, does that stop what we have planned already? Because I thought we were going to start on the designs of that area. Does that stop that or we continue as?
We have monies to study, the streetscapes is what you're talking about?
Uh huh.
We're proceeding forward with that.
Okay, I didn't know if that stopped because it was on this thing.
And just know that this is long-range transportation plan.
Okay.
And when we say long-range?
We mean long-range.
We mean long-range.
Oh, let me tell you, I know what long-range means, I've been waiting on South Lumpkin Road for long-range. All right, just want to make sure because I've been waiting so long for it, that's all. Thank you.
Councilor Davis?
Two questions, so you did say at any time this document can be amended, right?
Yes, sir, that's right.
Okay, so if we were to bring you something of significance, you could add it to it.
Absolutely.
Okay, second question is, does this document, does it qualify any of these projects to be shovel-ready?
No, it does not.
If it goes to the TIP, would that be a qualifier for shovel-ready?
When it gets, when the actual funding is identified from the state and federal level, then it goes into, like I said, we would call it the TIP or the Transportation Improvement Program. Meaning we've actually programmed it for engineering and construction at that point. But we can't do any of that, of course, until we actually get the funding identified.
Well, I guess, let me go out a little bit further. I'm looking more at the federal level. So if one day we get to having a discussion on infrastructure improvements, does this document help from that standpoint if there is? I'm not sure how it'll all be put together. I mean, I'd like to see it one day, I don't know if it'll flow through the state to here or what, but would this document help from that standpoint?
It could, it could.
Or would it be the TIP that would be more important?
TIP again, like I said, identifies the actual funding source for the project itself. We have a source we can tap into, and that's a longer story we need to get into tonight, but I'm just telling you that there is that process that does establish these kind of projects and that lets everybody know that we are ready to go forward with these things and we're not just starting from scratch.
Yeah, and I think, my response to your question is yes. Because if it's in the Transportation Improvement Plan, that means we've identified funding.
That's right.
It's in this long-range plan, we want to do it, but we've got to find some money. And so if there's some infrastructure dollars that get appropriated, then there goes some money. And so we need to be moving them from here up to the- And so we need to be moving them from here up to the Transportation Improvement Plan. And so the response to your question is yes.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
That appears to be all.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Rick. Thank you.
The last update, Mayor and Council, is the monthly finance update. Director, Finance Director, Angelica Alexander.
Hello again. So what's being passed around is the snapshot for FY 2020 as of September 2019, and we're comparing September 2019 to September 2018. Just starting to the right of the snapshot, as far as the operating fund revenue, starting with the general fund, the general fund is up 52.93 percent. As you may recall, for FY 19, there was a difference in the due date as far as our property taxes were concerned. It was, the due date for property taxes was a little bit later than it typically is. We are currently on schedule for FY 20 to, with our normal due date being, the first installment being due October 1st, with the second installment being due in December. And so that, that's, that is the difference there between the, the revenue and the reporting period is the, primarily the property taxes and just the timing differences in when we receive those monies this year as opposed to when we received them last year. The other local option sales tax fund is up 9.82 percent. We have been on a steady uptick as far as our local option sales taxes are concerned, and that's been great news for us. And we'd like to attribute that to the change in the laws, which were, as of January 1st, 2019, internet sales were taxable and reportable to us. We can now request a confidential report from the Georgia Department of Revenue. That was a recent change in the legislature as of the end of the most recent session. Again, this report is confidential. The only caveat is you can only make that request once a year, and it can only be for a specific period of time. And Council actually has to authorize the person to receive such report. So at the beginning of this fiscal year, you did make that authorization for myself to receive this report. I am currently working on securing that information from the Department of Revenue and hopefully provide better analysis as to the increase in our sales tax revenue. The Stormwater Sewer Fund is up 1,481.77 percent. And this is a fund that is primarily supported by taxes. Again, this is a timing difference as far as when we recorded the tax revenue last year to this year. You'll see here on the snapshot, almost all of the tax-supported funds, such as the paving fund, that's up 535.54 percent. It is also tax-supported. The Medical Center Fund is up as well. The Integrated Waste Fund is down 1.09 percent. And it's not that we're down in terms of the solid waste collection fees that we're receiving. There was a one-time disaster reimbursement that was recorded in that fund in FY 19 that we received from GMA. And so that is the difference there as far as that revenue being down. The Emergency Telephone Fund is showing has been down 54.09 percent. And again, it is a timing difference and the collection practices that have now occurred for this fiscal year. I don't know if you recall, but as of January 1, 2019, the state took over the collection, the collections of the emergency 911 fees. And with that, that changed, two things changed for us. The timeliness in which we receive that revenue changed. There's now an additional month delay because the providers have to report that information to the state. The state has to gather up all of that information, provide the necessary reports to the counties, and then disperse that money to us within the following month. So there's an additional month delay in us receiving that revenue. They also changed how the rev, when the revenue is dispersed to us in regards to prepaid wireless fees. If you go buy a prepaid phone, there is a fee that the seller is responsible to remit to the state. The state used to send that payment to us once a year in September. Now we receive these fees on a monthly basis. So whereas we received it all at once for the prior year, we're now receiving them on a monthly basis. And so we'll see this revenue really sort of stable out as we get further on into the, into the fiscal year. The Economic Development Fund is obviously up from where we were reporting as of September 2018. Debt Service Fund shows an increase of 853.86 percent. Transportation Fund is up 53.92 percent, and again, this is one of those timing differences. We'll notice that, you'll, you'll see that here in the, in the large fluctuations as far as the percentage, whether it's an increase or a decrease. When we're coming out of the first quarter of the new fiscal year, there's a lot of things that's happening in terms of us recording prior revenue receivables and, you know, making sure that we are posting accounts payables appropriately. And so that's what, a lot of that is what's going on. It's just really timing differences, and as we get closer to January, you'll see these numbers really start to stabilize. Trade Center Fund is down .22 percent. The Bull Creek Golf Course Fund is up 5.16 percent. Oxmo Creek Golf Course Fund is down 3.23 percent, and the Civic Center Fund is up 22 percent. Moving down the snapshot to the other local option sales tax public safety summary, we've collected 4.5 million in revenue year-to-date, with about 5.6 in expenditures. The other local option sales tax infrastructure summary reports 1.9, 1.9 million in revenue and 339,000 approximately in expenditures. Moving to the left side of the snapshot here, you see the departments that are highlighted. These are the departments that are sort of on our watch list. Starting with the city attorney's litigation, we're defending several million in claims for the information technology department. A lot of our annual maintenance fees and software lease agreements are due at the beginning of the fiscal year. The real estate department, that is where we pay for the repairs or repairs and maintenance to legacy terrorists. Earlier this fiscal year, Council did approve us to a contract for up to just over 200,000 in repairs for legacy terrorists. And what we're using to offset those expenditures are, of course, revenues that we receive regarding the rental income from that piece of property, as well as some fund balance that we've reserved specifically for legacy terrorists. For engineering, the annual payment of Motorola for radio maintenance, again, this is one of those items that will stabilize as we get further on in the, in the fiscal year. This is a payment that's made at the beginning of the year. The same with the funds that were expended for the purchases of the equipment in Parks and Recreation. The check was cut very early on, and for the items that Council approved in FY 19, that was, check was cut very early on in this fiscal year. And so they are just on the border there as far as the, the goal. The goal is to be above 75 percent, and they're at 74 percent right now. The prisoner and medical contract was in convert for Muskogee County Prison. The court reporter services were in convert for the Superior Court Judges. And this is an annual encumbrance, both for the Muskogee County Prison and for the Superior Court Judges. Again, this is encumbered at the very beginning of the fiscal year, and so we're counting that as part of our obligations. For the jury manager, just the jury summons, subscription fees, as well as the petted jury fees, is causing that to be on the watch list. And then for our public defender, we pay that monthly contract in advance. So it'll always appear to be over, but it will, won't actually be. So that in itself is, in a nutshell, is the snapshot. There are additional reports that are available online as it relates to the other local option sales tax fund, goes back to the very beginning of that fund. There are also reports online on the finance department's website. You can also get to the finance reports from the homepage. There's a link at the source, midway's of the page where you can, where it takes you directly to the financial reports. But transportation, T-SLOSS projects are available online, as well as OLOS infrastructure projects is available as well. So I'll take any questions if you have.
Doesn't appear to be any.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my agenda.
I think we've got several referrals coming. Councilor Huff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. City Manager, could I ask you to have the staff look at a UDO text wording on dumpster screening?
Sure.
Come back to us at some point, it could be a work session.
Sure.
But just to make sure that we're, we're doing what UDO says, or if you ought to make a change or not, so we can discuss it and figure out how we want to go. Thank you.
Will do.
Council Woodson?
Yes, I would like a referral for the sign ointments, point, I mean, 4.44, item G, to be reviewed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Council Davis?
On the matter of dumpster screening, I'd like the staff to also look into maybe sunset in the grandfather clause, further out maybe, so that everybody can come into compliance. Because I still get a lot of calls about people concerned about that. I know that, you know, in the district I represent, there's a lot of new development, so it's automatically screened, but some other of the council members, you know, quite frankly, has kind of no respect.
So you'd like to sunset the grandfather?
Well, that's an option, too, in looking at bringing the UDO up to.
Sure.
UDO up to date, or?
Okay.
Yep.
Council Woodson?
Yes, on the sunset on the dumpster, we need to look at the minutes, because I was looking at the ordinance, and there was nothing there about a sunset. But we can, and we need to pull up the minutes and see, because I think that sunset was done temporary for us to come back and discuss it. But for some reason, you know, moving on businesses, whatever, we never came back to address it, because there was a section on there that said they had up to 18 months to be in compliance. And I did get some of the minutes, but not all of the minutes of that. So I'm not sure if there was actual a sunset, or we just delayed it for a period. So if we're going to have the discussion, I think all the information needs to be forward so we have a clear understanding of what happened and what we need to go forward. Because this was done in 2005, and we're in 2019.
Okay.
So.
Well, we'll, we'll certainly bring it back, but just buckle your seatbelt, because it's gonna be really interesting.
And that's my reason. And that's my reason why I'm asking to bring all the minutes, everything about it, because I think it's important for everybody to be on the same sheet of music when we have the discussion, because lots of people on the board now were not here at the time. So the minutes are very important, and the ordinance to be brought. I picked up some of it today to get it, and that's the reason why I'm saying. And I didn't have all the information, but I have some of that. And people were given 18 months, and then there was a discussion, and we stopped it for a moment, but I don't think there was an actual grandfathered. And so that's why I'm requesting that when we have that discussion, we have the full packet so we can really understand it and see what happened in 2005 and 2016 to where we are today in 2019.
Yeah, we'll bring you all the way up to.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
And the whole presentation with the new presentation.
We will.
Okay. All right. Madam Clerk?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. For the Clerk's Agenda, the first item is the Employee Benefits Committee. We received a memorandum from the Human Resources Department submitting the results of the employee survey. We have Andrea McGruder to fill the unexpired term of Michael Jordan, Shannon Hubbard to fill the unexpired term of the late Linda Lunsford, and Nancy Borm to fill the term of Dustin Heath. They may be confirmed.
Okay.
Motion second to confirm, any discussion? All right, can we post, pull that up, Mike Bruce, or just voice, voice vote? All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? They're confirmed.
Item two is the Airport Commission. Received an email correspondence from Amber Clark, the Airport Director, submitting the name of Carl Rose Jr. to serve another term of office. He may be confirmed.
Move confirmation.
Yes, we've got, I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am. Councilor Thomas?
According to the regulations for nominating people for this board, the commission is supposed to submit to us three names, and we select from those three names. And this is not following that pattern. So I would request that we have some kind of communication with the Airport Commission that they need to submit two more names. And quite frankly, I'm looking for somebody with some general aviation experience to serve on this commission.
Councilor Thomas is absolutely correct. And so we will touch back bases with the Airport Commission and request two additional nominees, or three more, three nominees.
And we could look at Pratt &amp; Whitney, or people from there who want to serve.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I said we can check with Pratt &amp; Whitney to see if there are any people and employees in there that would like to serve.
Perhaps, she said we could look at Pratt &amp; Whitney for some possible nominees?
According to our rules and regulations, the commission is supposed to submit three names to us, and we select from those three names. And what I'm saying is, as the commission is looking for three people, names to submit to us, know that I'm looking for somebody with general aviation experience. And we can not approve any of the three, that they send to us, send it back to them, have them send us three more. But that's what the regulations say.
Okay.
That is correct, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, we'll bring that back then.
Mm-hmm.
Councilor Crabb?
Thank you. So is the rule that we do not recommend to them?
Well, hang on. Hang on.
Meant to us. Here's what it says. Well, fully. Under Airport Commission, the commission itself nominates three individuals for each vacancy. The Columbus Council fills the vacancies from the commission's nominees. So they submit to us the name of three recommended members, and we select one of the three.
Okay. Because I have somebody with aviation experience that I've recommended to them.
Well, it, it's supposed to come from them to us. And what I'm saying is, as, as I understand it, none of the people who are currently on the commission have general aviation experience. And so I'm looking for some that do.
I know there, I know there's at least one that does have. Yeah, he's a pilot. All right. Council Garrett?
I, I think what we were, we're shooting for, yes, Mr. Barker does have aviation experience, but we're talking about as a private owner, who obviously is the one paying the rate increases, who is handling all the different issues that we are, we're hearing about as a council. So, Madam Clerk, I would like that very clear that at least two councils are asking for recommendations, because we do have the right to reject the slate until we get, we are satisfied. Because right now, there is not a, there's not a member of the board who is a, that I'm aware of, is a private aircraft owner and general aviation, that combination.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Item number three, minutes of air sports to be received.
All right. Motion second to receive the minutes from the boards. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? They're, they're approved.
Next, we have board appointments. Mr. Mayor, we have the Commission of Visitors, Board of Commissioners, as well as the Pension Fund.
I'll bring those back to you.
Next, we have council appointments that are ready to be confirmed. For the Person Review Board, we have Dr. Michael Forte. He was nominated by Councilor Huff to serve another term of office, and if there are no further nominations, he may be confirmed.
Motion second to confirm Mr. Forte. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
Next, we have Mr. Charles Harp, who was also nominated to serve Next, we have Mr. Charles Harp, who was also nominated to serve another term of office. He may be confirmed.
Motion second to confirm Mr. Harp. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? He's confirmed.
Then we have Mr. Willie Butler. He was also nominated to serve another term.
Motion second to confirm Mr. Butler. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? He's approved.
For the Recreation Advisory Board, we have Sharice Malone.
Motion and a second to confirm Sharice Malone. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? She is confirmed.
For the Tree Board, we have Kirsten Youngquist. She was.
Motion second to approve Ms. Youngquist, and also to confirm Ms. Trotter. Any discussion on either one of those? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? They're both confirmed.
Next, we have council district seat appointments. We have the Public Safety Advisory Commission, and Counselor Woodson is nominating Lisa Brancum. She may be confirmed.
Motion second to confirm. Any discussion?
Could you just say the name again? I'm sorry. It's Lisa Brachcomer.
Thank you.
Yeah, just call Lisa. Lisa Brachcomer. I'll spell it out for you, hold on. It was interesting for me to.
All right.
It's like Branc, you know, B-R-A-N-C-H-C-O-M-B.
Yes. Motion second to confirm her. Any further discussion?
She's probably laughing watching on TV.
All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? She is confirmed.
Thank you.
Grateful for her willingness to serve.
And next, council appointment, we have for a vote tabulation. For the Board of Tax Assessors, we have the seat of Daniel Hill. Counselor Barnes has nominated him to serve another term of office. And Counselor Crabbe has nominated Trey Carmack. Counselor Allen.
Trey Carmack.
Barnes.
Daniel Hill.
Crabbe.
Trey Carmack.
Davis.
Carmack.
Garrett.
Carmack.
Huff.
Carmack.
Thomas.
Carmack.
Thompson.
Hill.
Woodson.
Carmack.
Carmack has eight. He may be confirmed.
Move confirmation.
Motion second to confirm. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
He didn't ask, he didn't ask me.
Oh, I'm sorry, did I miss you?
Oh, he's not on this list.
I'm so sorry, I don't have you on my form.
Yeah, he's not on the list.
So that does make eight, eight to two for Carmack.
Ms. Carmack is here. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
So for the, next we have for the Personnel Review Board, these are council appointments. Any nominations will be listed for the next meeting. Charles Little Junior, and we have one vacancy, that's an alternate member seat. For the Recreation Advisory Board, we have the District Six appointment. Thank you, Counselor Allen. For the Region Six Regional Advisory Council, we have the seat of Edward Barnwell, who has resigned. It's open for nominations. For the Tree Board, we have Mr. William Consalletti, Brad Huff, and Candace Wayman. All are open for nominations. For upcoming board appointments, we will have the Hospital Authority and the Housing Authority. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Mr. DeBose, if you would like to have three more minutes, sir, they're yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Because I believe obedience is better than sacrifice, I apologize to you.
No, sir, that's fine.
For being disruptive, Mr. City Manager. I apologize if you thought I questioned your professionalism. And so the point I want to make really quick is, number three, there are no candidates, there are candidates ready to run for that office. There are people who are ready to run. And I've always said, the office is bigger than the marshal. I think we focus too much on Marshal Grant Contra, but not the office. The next thing is, the Public Advisory Commission, as much as I respect them, they don't know what is best for the people. The people know what's best for them. Next, I'm not questioning the council's rationale, your legitimacy, or your argument. The only thing I'm making a point on, I'll die on that, that the right of the people to vote is so precious, and it cannot be decided by a few people. And I pushed that, I stayed to the end because of that point. The next is, what do you say, each of you? What is your message to the sixty-one percent who voted in two thousand? I was one of those voters. What is your message to me? Did my vote count? Didn't it count? Did you take it from me? Can I vote again? And the next point is, you are not abolishing an office, you are abolishing an elected position that the people have voted on since nineteen seventy-one. And finally, I think you all may have missed my point. I'm not fighting for or against the abolishment, although I voted, no. I continue to stand on this. I'm voting on the right of the people to decide what's best for them. This council can go back, and they don't have to put it in the hands of the legislatures. You all can go back and put that referendum back in the hands of the people. We deserve the right. Those of us who were here in nineteen eighty-four, we heard your argument, and we rejected it. Those of us who were here in two thousand, we heard your argument, and we rejected it. What I'm saying to you is, make your best case to the people, but don't let the people think that because you could not get it passed through them, you decided to do it on your own. Councilman Barnes put something forward in twenty-eleven, and I appreciate him. He at least said, let's put a stutter for it, but it didn't go anywhere. And so the big picture for me is, make your best case, make your argument, but do it in daylight, don't do it in darkness. Don't pass this off to the legislators. We'll fight them, too. We are going to put the argument to the people. I might have had it wrong, Councilman Barnes, I don't know, I know that somebody did, they had requested a status. And so to counsel, I'm a little bit more calm now. It's night, I've missed, all of my pay for, I run a business. If you run a business, you know if you miss a whole day's work, you don't get paid. But that's how important the right of the people, the people to choose. That's how important that right is. You can't say to the people, I trust you on a one percent sales tax, but I don't trust you on the marshal's office. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. DeBose. Counselor Barnes?
You're making that correction. That wasn't me.
I apologize.
Okay.
Counselor Davis?
We, I've got something for the City Manager.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Actually, City Attorney, one for City Manager. For, it came to my attention about just some of the stuff that the Tree Board does, and you know, and it was explained to me that the, the City Manager, that we really haven't taken the opportunity to look at our tree canopy, or to update our tree canopy. You know, if we haven't done that, then I think that's a very important tool for the Tree Board to utilize and to work, and it's part of their mission, part of what they are responsible to do. So that would definitely help us to see where we're at today. I don't know if we've done that anytime soon, and that's kind of the conversation I had, so I'd like to leave that with you. Well, and let me just say that Counselor Huff had a meeting in his district at M.L. Harris United Methodist Church. The mayor, I think, Mayor, you may have, I don't know who called the meeting, but it was held at M.L. Harris United Methodist Church. And there were a number of counselors there, I can't remember who all. Counselor Thomas, you were there. And we committed, House, and we committed, Allen, I knew that there were a number of counselors there.
We had a core.
Yeah, we had a core. And counselors committed that we would do exactly what you just asked, and staff, I know Deputy City Manager Goodman, they're working on it, and they're working on a comprehensive plan, so they've been working.
And let me add that we've had, I've had meetings with the, with Trees Columbus. They're in the process of doing a tree canopy audit in Lake Bottom Park. It's a pilot program done with a grant, but they have approached our folks about trying to leverage that same activity throughout the city. Because they showed us a chart of declining canopies, trees that are aging out, they, you know, they're just going to have to be taken down. There are trees in the uptown area that are dropping limbs big enough to smash cars. So we're aware of it, and we do have multiple resources we're marshaling. I really can't give you as much information about public works and what we're doing with our arborists, but I know they're working with Trees Columbus and the Tree Board to try to.
And while we're, thank you, ma'am, while we're on the subject of trees, I want, and I've already talked to the mayor, I want to throw this out there, too. Mr. City Manager, I think we've got a crisis looming, lurking. We just went through this drought, and it's come to my attention as well in areas, neighborhoods, places throughout our community, we've got a lot of dead trees, mainly pines, so they just didn't make it. And these pines are right on top of the transmission, or telephone line, or, excuse me, the power lines. And some of them are on our rideaways, but they're in places that sooner or later, they're dead, and they're on their way out, but they're either, we take, somebody takes them down, or they're coming down, and it could hurt somebody really, really bad. So that may be something that the staff might want to discuss and talk about how to deal with that. And I'm not talking about one or two trees, I'm talking about a lot of them. And I don't, you know, I can't tell you what Georgia power responsibility, are we responsible? Who's responsible? But I think there needs to be a discussion on that. Well, let me just say that if a citizen knows that there is a tree on the right-of-way that's dead, they need to call three-one-one. We don't take that lightly. We know that it's dangerous. And I mean, I'll say this on air, if you put us on notice, and we fail to act, we have a responsibility. And I want people to know that. And I want them to call three-one-one. If they call three-one-one and tell us there's a dead tree on the right-of-way, and we don't handle it, I've got, that's a real problem for me.
Okay. Thank you. The last one.
City roads.
I'm sorry?
I said we need to let them know that right-of-way means city roads, not private property.
Right. Exactly. City right-of-way.
Somebody else has already called it in, call it in.
That's right. Yeah, even if you think someone has called it in, call it in. My last concern is with the City Attorney. City Attorney, can we craft an ordinance that would require cable companies, other vendors who, they, we do charge them franchise fees to operate on our rideaways, but they're really negligent in leaving debris behind, and used cables and wiring and all, it's just hanging all over the place. Can we adopt an ordinance that requires them to take that stuff down, and to get rid of it, and dispose of it correctly and properly, instead of just leaving it?
We'll have to look at it. Maybe from a litter standpoint, but all the franchise fee regulation is now controlled by the state, so. But from a public health, litter, safety standpoint, maybe.
Well, I think we've got a problem there, and if that's the way to handle it, that everybody knows that you're responsible and required by policy to take that, by law, to take that stuff away and dispose of it properly.
We actually had that problem at our house after the tornado hit. They left a big old wad of that stuff, and it was like trying to put toothpaste in a tube, put that stuff in a bag. Counselor Huff? Do you look into it? Thank you.
Oh, thank you, sir.
I just wanted to say, Counselor Davis, the meeting that we had with several counselors, the mayor and the City Manager, we don't have dead trees, we have some living trees that are causing problems. I had one last year that fell across from a neighbor's yard into the power lines, and basically took out all the power in that area. But what we're looking at is, as far as the tree canopy program is, to figure out a way to see if we can come up with an idea to get down some of the trees that are causing all of the property damage, and to replace them with some smaller trees that would make the neighborhood look good. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Barnes?
Just one final comment about the Veterans Day Parade.
Yes, sir.
And in that, Mr. Charlie Morphin, he was scheduled to be the parade marshal, and we all know what, he was the, in this area here, in this community here. He was the last of the World War Two. He was at D-Day. And so, Mr. Mayor, I would like for you, you and just one other person, we're going to keep the, I want to start at ten-hundred hours. So I've only got, have you and one other person scheduled. So if there's, if you could make a couple of comments on behalf of the city. I talked to the family, I asked them if any of them wanted to ride in a vehicle, and they said no, so it's going to be just a driver and empty vehicle, but I always, already have the markers on the side. But I wanted to say publicly that we, that Mr. Morphin, courageous hero, the last in this community of World War Two D-Day veterans passed away. But he will be, the vehicle would be driven with the markers on his vehicle.
It'd be quite an honor for him. And I got, I got to tell you, in a community like this, with our dependence upon Fort Benning, and with the number of veterans that are in our region, that should be the most well-attended parade of the year. So I challenge all of council, I challenge everybody that's viewing to try to show up out there and support our veterans. It's a very, it's a very fitting tribute. And Counselor Barnes, not toot his horn, but he's done a magnificent job of growing this over the past eleven years. And it's a, it's a, it's a very worthy tribute for the veterans in our area. And I think we have a, well, I think we have, we need an executive session.
On real estate acquisition.
On real estate acquisition. So I have a motion to go into executive session?
Second.
Motion second to go into executive session, discover, to discuss land procurement. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? We are in executive session. All right, we are, we are back in, we are back in regular session. We discussed possible land procurement, but were no votes. I'll entertain a motion. Motion adjourned, second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned.